I'd like to move to communicate.
Second, excuse me.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. We are now at open session. Thank you. Regarding the order of business, we may have a few proposals for a change in our agenda.
Okay, I would like to recommend that we move the superintendent report to follow item M1. That would put it at the end of the meeting. The reason is, we have a couple of guests that will be appearing in my report. You know, I don't think it's there to appear at the beginning, so.
Sounds like a good idea.
Is everyone comfortable with just verbal consensus?
Yep.
Thank you for that. Any other changes? Alright, thank you. That then takes us to public appearance. Hold on, let me try that one more time. Public appearances. It's been a day, right people? And we do have one, and that would be Jeff Simmons. And again, when you come forward, if you please state your name and address for our minutes.
Hello again, everybody. I'm coming to speak about the Killer Mockingbird.
Could you please do name and address just for...
Oh, sure.
No, no, thank you.
Jeff Simmons, 6011 Winnaquah Road.
Thank you.
I'm here to speak about the Killer Mockingbird because my understanding that it's on the agenda today. A lot, completely unclear to me is what exactly it's on the agenda for. So just as a preface, I think, I realize you guys are struggling. This is a new thing, having this much controversy about a curriculum thing. But you gotta, you gotta fix the process here because it's designed to tamp down public input the way it's done right now. So I'm just gonna speak, hoping to anticipate what the discussion is gonna be. I gave you most of my background last time, I think, everybody this year. I'll give you the thumbnail sketch. You know, grew up in a racist neighborhood, but also grew up loving the Killer Mockingbird. One thing I didn't mention last time I was here, I actually have a nephew whose middle name is Atticus. He's named Atticus, which I think is kind of weird, but it gives you some, I get where people are coming from when they've got this emotional attachment to the book. And when I first heard about the complaint about the book, my initial reaction was probably the same as most people, which was a knee jerk. You gotta be kidding me, you know? Who would want to take Killer Mockingbird out of the curriculum? But then I thought about it this morning, well, you know, maybe, I shouldn't be so hasty, I should think about it. I knew a little bit about the complainants and their background was kind of similar to mine, so it made me pause a little bit. I think I'm much more conflicted about it than them, but at least where I come out now, after thinking about this much more deeply than I've thought about any other issue before the school board, is that I think it should probably be a secondary text. I don't, I don't think it should be taken out of the school altogether, but it's one of only, I think, three or maybe four books we're teaching the kids. I have concerns about it being one of those. And I, and so I'll address what I think are some of the objections that I heard when the committee considered it. You know, what, the arguments I heard in favor of keeping it. One was just, well, it's a classic, you know, won the Pulitzer Prize, won all these awards. That's, nobody disputes that. I don't dispute that it's a classic. I think it's a fantastically written book. But I think the classic argument is kind of a compound, because it just, it's a, it's a way to get around the substantive issues. You know, it's kind of saying, well, this got the seal of approval 56 years ago when they got the Pulitzer Prize, and it's always going to be a fantastic book and we should have a question. That just, that just, there's no real substance to that argument. Then the other one I heard at the meeting was, you know, we don't want the kids to forget about this period in our history. You know, we don't want to wipe out this period of our history and shield our kids from it. And I agree, but I don't think anybody's proposing that we do that. And I think we probably teach kids about this period of our history in other classes as well. And I think it'd be great to teach them, to them about them in English class or in a book of literature. I just think, we need to think about whether this is the right book to be doing that. And then, the other one that I think was maybe most frequent and has more substance to it in a way, is the argument that, look, I don't want our kids to grow up in a bubble. I don't think we should be shielding our kids from these, you know, from words that are unpleasant, or from topics that are unpleasant. I heard that a lot. And I totally agree. I don't think the kids should be shielded from this at all. These issues are important to me. I think they should be taught to them. I don't think the N-word should just be taken out of the curriculum and ignored. But I, that criticism actually is the one that kind of bugged me the most, because it was, in my view, it was dripping with irony. Because nobody on the committee, and I'm sure nobody on this, on this board, could bring themselves to actually utter the word that was in dispute. You know, it's the word niggers used 47 times in the book. That was the complaint. And no one could bring themselves to utter it at all. No one uttered it in the meeting. And it wasn't that surprising to me, because let's face it, the average, well-meaning white person has no idea how to deal with this issue anymore. We're all really uncomfortable with it. I mean, Jennifer, you said yourself at the meeting that when you teach it, you don't utter it, you know? And I'm guessing, it, it's hard, you know, it's a really uncomfortable topic to talk about. And I don't think any of us are really very well-equipped to teach it anymore. And if that's the case, I mean, we're really the ones living in the bubble. You know, what it sounds to me a little bit like is, it's, you know, I worry that they're teaching this book a little bit like, maybe I want to teach sex ed to my kids? Like, I don't want to talk to you about it, but give me this book and you read that.
So I need, I need to remind you that we're at time, so if there are particular points that you can make briefly.
Yeah, well, the ultimate question I think that we need to ask is the one that one of the committee members did ask. And I mentioned this last time. They said, I can't imagine what it's like for an African-American kid, what an African-American kid would think if they were reading this book. To me, that's the question you gotta wrestle with. And I'm not saying it's an easy question to answer, but I don't think we can just blow it off anymore and say this book is a classic. I think if we want to be inclusive, we need to think about what those kids are thinking, not, you know, what my white kids who are thinking, who are learning everything they're supposed to be learning. And it's, it's not a difficult one at all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can I just ask a follow-up question?
A clear, sure.
Just, Mr. Simmons, do you have two freshmen at Winona Grove? Have they shared with you their experience of being in the classroom this year?
Yeah.
And able to comment on their experience?
Actually, I asked them about that today, because they're both, they both have the same teacher. They're both just about done. They're not done. I gotta say, they both really liked the book. They both said, the book is really good, we really like it. And they said, basically, I think they said all the things that their teachers would want them to say and to get out of the book. But at the same time, I asked them, well, what are they, what are they teaching about the N-word? How are they dealing with the N-word in the book? And they both said, well, they said that, that's a word that they used to use a long time ago. We're not gonna say that. It's not a good word to say. And that's all they could remember to be discussed. Now, there may, you know, you know how crazy are, maybe there was more that was said and they were spacing it out.
That's the same thing my ninth grader reported to me, so I was just wanting to double-check and see if different classes are having similar experiences. Thank you. And I didn't want to draw that out, but I thought I'd ask, because I know you have ninth graders. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, that takes us then to our consent agenda. We have two items. The approval of previous meeting minutes from February 28th, and also the approval of a staff resignations. So did we want to do those together or, or not?
I have an approval and consent agenda as presented.
Okay.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor, oh, I'm sorry. Any further discussion? I just want to make...
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda, we're good, okay. Well, just wanted to make sure, okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The consent agenda has been approved. That takes us tonight to recognitions. Do we have any? Susan Box.
Actually, I just want to give a brief shout-out to the hundreds, so probably a couple thousand high school kids who watched the Catholic Day. It was awesome to see. It was very powerful for them. Very powerful to watch. I got a little teary watching them. They were just, you know, so serious about it and so enthused. They had a lot of creative, thoughtful signs, thought-provoking, so it was just, it was a really neat experience.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. And I'd like to add to that, as far as specifically here in our schools, I'd like to recognize our staff, our principals, and our students as well. My understanding is that at both the middle school and high school, the events were, went very well, very respectful. At the middle school, we had about 200 students that walked out peacefully to the playground, came back after the 17 minutes, and really, you know, they, they had discussion in their advisory as well about the purpose and, you know, of what that was about. And then likewise, at the high school, my understanding is we had about 600 students that walked out silently, stood along Winona Drive, stood silently for 17 minutes, and then, you know, returned to class. And so there's a lot of communication up to this day between staff and students. And I know our, both our principals are extremely proud of their staff and students today.
I'd like to thank you too, as Susan did, on that issue. There was a lot of national controversy about how they were gonna allow the students to do that. So I was really proud that our district is letting the students have a voice. And then I also want to mention, the basketball team did spectacular this year. Absolutely spectacularly. Tough weekend, but they did great. They definitely did.
Yes. And just a quick mention, I watched it on Wisconsin Eye, that they actually televised it. Yeah, so it was really cool. So I had it on between classes as people were coming and going, so it was, I wasn't sure if they would, but they did. So that was, that was really nice to hear some of the speeches as well.
I'm sorry, I should add that we did have some of our students participate in that as well. Going into today, we had 20-some students who, parents had, you know, called in in advance that their students were gonna participate. I don't know how many additional may have, but, so we did have some participation also.
Thank you. Anything else? Alright, that takes us then to correspondence and announcements.
I think you just received a copy of a correspondence that was sent to the board, and so you have a hard copy of that just regarding Killer Mockingbird from, oh, I don't have it in front of me, was it the library?
American Library Association.
Thank you, yeah.
Any other announcements? Alright, thank you. And we are going to, as we said, move the superintendent report to later, and so that take...
I'm sorry, I totally, I wrote this down and I had it in a different spot.
Okay.
I think this is where I do it. I've had two formal requests to have an updated presentation on the Advanced Learner Program. We did have one in 2016. It was six slides long, with an intro slide and an any questions slide. So any of that update, I think, I think it's helpful to the board, because we're getting questions about this now. As a board member, I want to make it clear that I've also requested that. And I know the timing is difficult right now, but it's a lot easier for me to be able to refer them to the right staff when I know what the system is and where they should go.
So on that note regarding Advanced Learner and an update about our program and how we serve students, I would encourage other board members to please contact Dan or myself if you're also interested in that and in what shape or form you would like to have that information, and perhaps at what time. Dan and I have been in conversation already about planning ahead, as to when would be a good time to have that information incorporated into another report. So if you have any thoughts or feedback, if you would please pass that on, that would be great. Thank you. Alright, that takes us then to board reports, and we begin with the community engagement. And Carrie Robbins.
Yes, so this committee met on March 6th. I believe we may have some members of the committee here tonight. Let's invite them, if they'd like to join us at the table to participate. I saw Michael earlier, and he might be the only one who was able to make this time, so thank you for coming.
Sure.
Our, our discussion at our most recent committee meeting was how to bring some of the ideas that we've been wrangling with the last few months back here to the board. And so I would just invite you to supplement anything I say or omit. Where we landed, as the committee was looking at the gaps that we have in the district right now, with what we first worked through a process this fall of communication and community engagement activities, we'd recommend that the district cover in some way that aren't currently fully staffed. Where we started doing our homework were, what were the things that other districts do? We had asked Dan to come back with some information. So I had briefed you previously in this group on some of those discussions, but where we're at now is, we had, as a committee, looked at models that other districts have used. You'll see in your board docs tonight, there's a document with a position description, and the title of it is Director of Communications and Community Engagement. So you can see the roughed-out model that we landed on as a committee, that we based around other comparable school districts, as well as a presentation we had from the person from CISA II. Should I separate CISA?
Yes.
And I'm gonna pause there and just check in with the committee. Do you remember us having talked about this in previous meetings, and so we're just picking up the thread here? What's in your board docs tonight is the recommendation coming forward from our committee of a way to handle these duties within the district. And we wanted to come and invite discussion tonight, and I've had a chance to see the proposal. I wanted to make sure and make it clear that our committee was all in favor of this going forward, and able to answer questions. I'm very glad Michael was able to come, because he was part of the discussion and may be able to supplement some of the things that feel different from a member of the community than a member of the board in having this conversation. So I'm gonna pause there. And do you want to introduce yourself to the board too?
Sure. I'm happy to be here. I'm Michael Harriman. I have a daughter who's a junior at Winona Grove High School, and I'm the, actually, Director of Communications and Community Engagement at Wisconsin Public Television. And no, I'm not looking for a new job. I don't use our public meetings, I'm putting that on.
Right, because there are other members of the committee who are also interested in this and advocated for it. And one that you guys know is Kathy Thomas, who couldn't be here tonight. And we did have some conversation about, isn't it helpful to have a Director of Communications come and tell you how important it is to have a Director of Communications? So we'll embrace that. That's a little weird. He was available. And the people on that committee all have some kind of communications interest or background, and that's why they're on their committee in the first place. So it was something that we have as a shared value, but he has personal experience in this and I thought might be available to answer questions that you have about this role, and yeah.
And I think just before Michael starts, part of why we thought it was so important that Michael come tonight, because we have people who weren't available, is because you and Katie and, I forget the person's name from CISA II, just gave us such a good understanding of what this role is. And, you know, Kathy in particular commented that she came in kind of thinking, hmm, and then walked out thinking, wow, they do a lot of, I mean, it's a very important thing. So that's why we thought they could communicate that better than we can, so that's why. I forgot the spot.
No, no.
Anyway.
So Michael, the board members had access to the PD that we had shared out with the committee.
Yeah.
And I wanted to open it up for questions, or if Dan had anything, I should maybe first ask that.
So, no, I think we'll just, you know, so.
Because then we were planning to bring it forward to this group and think, we are in support from our committee, and we bring it forward here to the board to consider. The timing of it is such that we felt it was important to do before the end of our committee season, so that it could be considered as part of the staffing plan going forward, and catch the wave of how we would budget for something like this, when it would make sense to do the recruitment, those kinds of things. And so we had, I wouldn't say a giant sense of urgency, but a small sense of urgency about making sure we got this into the pipeline at the right time, which was now. I guess I feel like I'm talking too much. Could, do you mind talking a little bit about where we were with the committee and how we landed here and what your thoughts were about the position?
No, I don't mind at all. Yeah, and I have a, one of the, I will say that what, what we started with at the committee level was not what you see now. And that was the outcome of the conversation Susan was referencing, and I think that was an important moment, because it's a really smart thing to start with all the other districts' PDs, and that's what we did. But a lot of them have the word "marketing" in them, and we had a really frank conversation about the fact that that's something that this district really doesn't suffer from. And it's not the nature of the position. After we talked about this for a while, it is not about selling stuff. It's not about glossing things over. It's about, it's about complicated things like multiple campuses in two communities that are, you know, different by several miles. You guys have a lot of complexity here. You don't have completely decentralized communications, because each school is responsible for it. So just from a strategic and tactical place, we sort of ended up in this place. I think there were a lot of people who kind of came away from it going, oh, is that what communications people do for a living? Which, on some level, it is not necessary. It's designed to be invisible. I mean, that's sort of the role that we play. So some of the things that we talked about, just so the board understands this, is right now, we're in a really, reactive sounds like a strong word, but we are playing defense and in communications. Joyce is largely the communications team, and we talked a lot about, I'm a frustrated parent at times, has a hard time finding information, don't really understand how social media is driven between all the different schools. You get used to that kind of stuff. We really felt it was important to centralize, but we also felt it was important to look at some of the other roles. So we talked about this executive communication function that this position could counsel on, but that would primarily still reside with Joyce, but this other idea of being available to the schools, connecting the schools to some sort of a common communication theme. You know, I've been to meetings where people are questioning things like, boy, property taxes are going up. Well, you don't have anybody out there uniformly telling the story about, well, doesn't that signify things like great value in the community, great schools, things like that? You know, and when I, when I actually started on this committee, that one of the very first things I was telling this thing, Carrie, was, I went home and I took a note. I was like, I cannot believe the district that this size doesn't have a communications department. I really couldn't. It was, it was pretty stunning to me. And so I think the time is absolutely right for this, and I want to debunk one thing just while I'm here, because oftentimes, we had a conversation not long after Parkland. And I want to debunk something that this is, A, it's not, this has been something that's been talked about for a long time. This is not knee-jerk to anything, and unfortunately, Parkland is not one, it's one of many. In a crisis moment of that magnitude, any communications director is gonna call in outside counsel that specializes in things like crises of that magnitude. So I just want to put that to rest, that that's not what this is about. Sometimes people get into their head that, oh my gosh, that's what they want to do. But it is really, the opportunities that are being lost every day in this district by not having centralized communication, by not having a strategic communication plan that's outbound, that you guys are in front of, it's time to play a little offense. It's a great district. There are great stories, great faculty, you know, and I think it's time to give the district office a little support for this too, so. So that's, that's my, that's my citizen hat, so.
Thank you. And that address, so in this job description we landed on, as Director of Communications and Community Engagement, you were just focused now on the communications part. And then we also had some conversations about community engagement.
Yeah.
And by being nobody's job right now in the district, it's kind of, becomes a responsibility of someone like Joyce or administrative staff to organize things like the community forum, or like listening sessions, or things that we would like to have, which this kind of position for community engagement would have a role in coordinating or setting up for two-way communication with citizens?
I'm glad you said that.
Am I talking a little bit about that?
No, thank you.
If you think the conversations in the group are better than I'm representing them right now.
Yeah, no, and thank you. We didn't, we didn't practice this at all, but, no, it was actually...
And then other part.
It's a good segue. No, no, it is true, because one of the, one of the big functions, so at the television station, one of the big functions, I have 23 people on my team full-time. One of the big functions of our team is building dialogue. I mean, the word broadcast alone, one-to-many, we're shouting at you, that whole world has changed, but it's changed for all the industries, not just broadcast television. This idea of putting out a newsletter once a week or once every other week isn't sufficient anymore. I have a social media team, for instance, that are responsive to the hour. Literally, if you jump on WPT's Facebook page tonight and ask a question, within an hour, somebody will answer your question. Parents are expecting that kind of stuff as well, but it's an opportunity to build relationships with more than, you guys have a great pipeline in, in the parents. We're not using it. That's part of communication and engagement. But then you also have this opportunity to create relationships and have somebody be in charge of those relationships. And that goes into the business community, that's the chambers, all this kind of stuff. I mean, we talked a lot about the fact that you've got organizations of faith here. We typically, as schools, turn up at those places when we need to fundraise, but we don't necessarily have relationships with them. And so part of this idea of community engagement is also, how do you address families that don't have kids in the district right now too, which is a considerable population of people? The opportunity to start building a dialogue and a relationship with the community writ large is there, but we've got to get outside of the school to do that, so.
Carrie, I was just gonna mention, and I'd be interested in Michael's thought on that. So the meeting we attended, I think it was a week ago, on basically safety, was sponsored by the Chamber. And the two, and they had, on the panel, there were mental health professionals and law enforcement, but then the superintendent of Winona Grove and MacFarland. So we haven't done that. We haven't done the listening sessions. We sent out notices. We haven't done any listening sessions to get input back. Is that kind of the thing you're thinking about?
It's, it's part, it's part of our responsibility. Like, in my job description, that's absolutely part of my responsibility. We do statewide listening sessions all the time. So it is, because again, it's the idea of communication directors and professionals aren't just interested in telling your story. They're also interested in building feedback loops with the community. So this idea of, it's, it's a great idea to have that sort of public face out there, but this is a person who would also be in charge of taking the pulse of the community and understanding sort of what's coming back in. Because that's the two-way street that you're looking for, I think, ideally in a school district. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. Two examples, two examples of that that came up, even in this committee meeting on March 6th. The idea of being listening to feedback was because we have 12 people on this committee. I allowed just two minutes or something, like anything else that, under our strategies on building community relationships. So it's like, was there anything else related to community relationships? And sometimes people come with like, something that's bugging them, that they, that they want to bring up, because we asked. And Dan and I have come away from a couple of these committee meetings with a little bit of like, we need to follow up on that, we need to follow up on that, where I feel like a person in this role would have been in those places and already have heard those things, so we're not quite as surprised. And I could tell you what the two were. One was related to what Michael mentioned a minute ago, how businesses in the community, this was mentioned by our Chamber of Congress person, routinely feel that there are certain seasons when they're just hit up for fundraisers and, you know, that they can be wearing. And, and so we talked about that sentiment. We also talked about a particular committee that was expecting to have a representative of the school district on it. And that when that committee met, there were some others, no one here from the school district again. And so she relayed that, and we said, well, did they invite us? So, you know, so there, there's also just gaps that happen sometimes, or assumptions that are made, because you don't have a relationship with people in different places. And we feel like this committee of citizens has helped to identify a few of those things that exist, but someone in this role would be in those places routinely, and be a representative of the district, and hear those things, and be more proactive about it, instead of us trying to patch it up and, oh, sorry, we didn't know, we were supposed to be there. No one fell through the cracks, and no one invited us, kind of thing. So, yes, I think that the vision is for the, the listening to be happening, either through formal listening sessions, through being a district representative in times and places, because it was also noted by one of our committee members, it's not Dan personally or only to serve as the ambassador role for the district. And so his schedule is what it is. He can't be everywhere, every place, and this would be another representative of the district with enough seniority and presence to represent the district. So we've talked about it in that way.
Process question first. Are committees charged with the, the task to come up with new positions and new job descriptions? That doesn't seem, that seems like overreaching on a committee to me.
This committee in the fall started, because again, this is the first time we had a committee staff as citizens. So we started with the process of first a needs assessment. What are the kinds of things, and we had, you know, the whole sticky chart workshop set up, what are the kinds of activities that you would be expecting or that you were looking for from the district? And then Dan did some work with us around what's already covered, how we update our website, who updates it, how our social media is managed, who manages it, worked us through some of the things that we put in place. And the committee members basically did a gap analysis. You know, having someone ad hoc update the homepage of the website is how it's being done right now. And there's not really support for what you're seeing on this document about our strategic plan, which was implementing strategies to ensure effective and timely communication. And that's our strategic plan for the district. So we had that in front of our committee as well, and said, okay, well, here's what's currently happening. What do you think should be happening? What's the gap? And then how would we go about it? And one of the questions that I asked, I love the committee, they show up, they're very engaged, it's, it's awesome. One of our questions was, do we leverage a group like this? And so how, how do we deal with the fact that we have people who are here, engaged, willing to do things? And what we settled on is, you can't meet once a month or once, or twice a month, and accomplish these things to the level that they're needing to be professionally managed. And so then we came back to, okay, well then, how do other districts perform this work? And we got far enough along that we asked Dan, how do other people do this? There's 400-some districts in the state of Wisconsin. Other people must have figured this out. What are they doing? And that's when we brought in the woman from CISA II. She was in a statewide role, understood how other districts, how would they manage it? You know, kind of worked us through that, and we got to the point where we're like, yes, all of this. And so that's why we wanted to bring it forward. So it wasn't really the case that we went into this thinking that our committee had a role in the staffing plan so much as a role in identifying the work that needs to be done, and thinking at first, we would do some of it. I mean, I actually have very willing people there that, you know, on a case-by-case basis, could come back and... I mean, I actually have very willing people there that, you know, on a case-by-case basis could come back in two weeks or something. But that wasn't the gap that they identified. They identified a day-to-day need. So that's how we got there. Does that answer your question?
Kind of, yeah.
I mean, that's how we got there, is we, we need, and I also felt like, there's a model in the district prior to my time on the board where other people in admin or staff roles would participate in committees. And I felt like someone in this kind of a role would absolutely be able to be engaged going forward in the community engagement committee of the board. I mean, that's just the kind of thing where there would be some natural synergy. Because there are times that citizens could contribute, and then there are other things that even just to have the agenda ready and have the minutes and that kind of stuff prepared, you do need staff time for that. And so finding that balance between what, what possibly more could we give Joyce to do? And what could we give Dan to do, and where's that in between, and how, how do you manage that? So we landed on, we need a person. So then our discussion was, how do you move forward with that? And we asked Dan, he suggested the timing around the staffing plan was something we could be mindful of. But it wasn't, hmm, it wasn't an initial charge to the committee. It was more how that grew out of our conversations. And I felt like, well, we'll bring it forward here. So at least the, at least the board can hear how the committee had proceeded with this.
So it's on the agenda tonight as a report from the committee. And, you know, one of the roles of the committee is to advise the board, you know, regarding the communications. I will have it on a future agenda as a regular discussion item, where then it's a, you know, my role in that.
So I have a question here, what do you mean by missed opportunities?
Well, there are interesting things happening all over this, all over the universe of the schools, right? And so things happen, maybe a small cluster of people know about it, maybe the parents and the kids that go to that one school do, but it doesn't get any further than that. That's an opportunity of just maybe doing a little bit of storytelling and bragging of some interesting things going on. But the other thing is just, when you have such a decentralized communication system, the other missed opportunity is just efficiency. I mean, if you, you know, you look around at every school and you start adding up all the different people that are, that have to remember to hit Twitter, to hit social media feeds, to hit homepages and updates on all those school sites. It's a really inefficient model, and there's no, there's nobody necessarily governing a core message strategy either. So just this idea of, some of it is about things like, what do you want the district to stand for? But how do you guys know, with no central communication staff, you don't necessarily know what, what anybody is saying. You have a lot of ambassadors out there speaking on behalf of the district at the administrative level. I'm not at all suggesting that somebody is doing something they shouldn't be doing. But it comes down to each single school then. So you've got each single school with each, with each with like its own communication strategy and plan. At, at a certain point, what role does the district play then in, in communications? You're outside of that, because it's, it's, they're all so isolated. So this idea of bringing them all together, it isn't about control. We talked about that in the committee as well, like there was some concern about, wait a minute, are we taking control away from the schools? Not at all. We're amplifying what the schools are doing. And we're making sure some of the, sometimes there's confusion, frankly. You know, you're hearing one, your kid comes home and tells you one thing, you jump on Facebook, you can't find anything. You go on the website, can't find anything. Then you learn from some kid's parents, friends, neighbor's kid, you know what I mean? And so that whole thing too, is just this idea of serving better, I think. This idea of, and that's where the community engagement side comes in as well.
Yeah, because the other missed opportunities were just being in places and listening.
And that too.
And so it was also kind of the part about not just us having messages we're sending out, but the missed opportunities of hearing what the community wants to share with us, that it's not a one-off thing.
I don't want to be difficult, I really don't. I just don't understand, like for me, a missed opportunity is somebody sold the car for dirt cheap, but I missed it. You know, I don't know, I don't, I can't think of an example in a school district where we're missing opportunities like this. And a lot of things I hear from my kids, friends, are things that the PR person, they're not going to tell me.
But, but that person should be hearing and advising the superintendent or the board.
Yeah, there are things that aren't going to be advised unless superintendent probably knows about it.
We should know more what the community says and feels and thinks about our stuff.
Thank you. Susan or Peter?
Well, I thought, I thought I had a question on the table.
Didn't know.
Yeah, well, you know, I mean, so it probably, it's going to come down to how you define opportunities. I mean, in this case, I think the missed opportunities, I, I, it scares me. I've got bureaus all over the state of Wisconsin. It scares me to think that if I didn't have centralized messaging, a centralized, you know, plan for how we communicate with each other, for how information goes out to the community, what I would have would be twenty-three different brands that I would be managing, and that would all get away from me. So from a communications perspective, the opportunity that I'm missing is, if I want to do something as a station, as a brand across all of those things, I can't. I've got to go to each one of those people. It's completely inefficient. I've, I've got to work within their system, within their framework. So it's sort of like having data systems that don't talk to each other. So the, and when you do get into a crisis mode, or you do get into some sort of a campaigning mode, I mean, when you guys go to referendum on something, the opportunity to go into, not school by school, not community by community, but to have something centralized come out, where you've got all the schools that are basically, and they have somebody to go to as well. Because that's the other problem, is there's, if you don't have anybody to go to for council, something is going to happen. This person is going to be available to go there. And to me, that's also, that's, that's a potential crisis averted, I guess.
Because, I mean, technically, you're a nonprofit business. We aren't a business. We're a completely different, and I can think of, an opportunity missed is coming up is the old school concert, right? I think everybody should see that because it's outstanding. But the reality is, you can't fit ten more people in the gym to watch it.
Right, that's right.
So it's not really a missed opportunity.
Well, and that's why we took marketing out, because we don't think this is about marketing.
Right, I don't think it's about marketing either, but, I mean, that's how I see a missed opportunity. People really miss out on a great concert because they don't go to that concert.
Yes.
But what could they do? I mean, there's no, unless we have a second one, and I've already talked about that, and the logistics are crazy. So I, I just still don't know, opportunities are missing. And I agree with the referendum, but the last time we had a referendum, we didn't have a PR person. Probably handled it very well. We passed about sixty-some percent.
Yeah.
Which I think, these days, is, is like full employment. I mean, you're not going to get much higher than that, no matter what you do. So I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to think of opportu, and I've been in communications my whole career, so I get it.
Yeah.
But I just don't see where in a school setting
Yeah.
that happens.
Well, and maybe, maybe we're barking down the wrong avenue just with that phrase of missed opportunities. I mean, you know, it's, but you know, the, I'm still perplexed by the fact that, I mean, and again, putting on my parent hat for a minute, I mean, it is, it is a challenging district to find answers to questions. And, and at the size and the magnitude of this district, I mean, the amount of money that flows through this with the budget, it's not necessary. And so at a, just at a process level, here's a missed opportunity, I guess, that I would put on the table. Who's doing this work now? I mean, this work is being done by somebody. It's just not being done well, and it's not being done in a coordinated fashion. But somebody's doing this work. And so if I can give Joyce a couple hours back, and Dan a couple hours back, and teachers a couple hours back, I mean, isn't that an opportunity now, right? I mean, and this is literally what's happening. These teachers and these administrators are doing all of this themselves. They're making their own decisions. They're doing all their own work. And they don't have anybody to go to to ask for help with, right? And so this is, to me, particularly as we were talking about Dan's office, this opportunity of, if Joyce has to work on this stuff and Dan has to work on this stuff, what are they not doing? And frankly, a lot of it is not, they don't need to be doing it. So, I mean, and that, and to me, that is a missed opportunity. If you have your superintendent working on things, he could be spending his time on other stuff, so.
And the only other missed opportunity that's coming to my mind is, as we had talked about it in the, in the committee, is that there are community groups that we're not connecting with. And I mean, one that maybe would resonate is a group like the Friends of the Cottage Grove Library. That, you know, there's just groups we're not even talking to, to find out what their interests are, how we may have alignment with some, supporting some of the similar educational things that, I mean, there's just, there's missed opportunities. And how they might support us.
Well, I don't think they're even meeting, so I don't think.
Do you know what I mean? Well, that's because they had no one to meet with, so they, I'm just kidding. So, but there might be missed opportunities, and it's just a different way of thinking of it as a sales context, and more thinking of it as a connections.
Well, and an opportunity to, and I mean, you have a powerful brand. And so when I, when we looked at the comments from businesses that were like, enough already, we know it's football season, and then here comes the football players, right? And we get that. But part of that, part of the reason that they're doing that is because they don't hear from us at any other point of the year. They have no other relationship with the district. And part of it is, they're, to be honest, there's no reason for the district to have a relationship sort of outside of those periods of time, except that's not being a very good community citizen. And so the idea then, again, of, and when you do need them for things, you've got them there. And so, but that's about sustainability. And right now, the challenge is, that work is being done by teachers, it's being done by parent volunteers. Those parent volunteers, kids graduate, then they move on, and then you've lost that relationship. So some of this is also about continuity, which I think is really an important thing. And my kid is going to graduate next year. And I'm not saying I'm going to go away, but I will eventually probably go away. And at that point, you've lost, you've lost a certain amount of energy from a volunteer. If there's not a professional with which that can stay, then you lose all that, I guess, is what I'm saying. So communications, obviously, I'm a communications person, so I'm, I'm passionate about it. But it's, it's so central to an organization, especially one of this size. I mean, with, with the scale and scope of this, this isn't just a few schools in one small city, so.
Thank you, Susan. Well, it, it's interesting to me, and I think this is a great discussion. I know we've talked about this a lot in terms of the charge to this committee. It's interesting that Jeff picked the exact same issue that I was going to use to exam, to exemplify a missed opportunity. And that is, so if you had not been a board member or been a parent, how would you have found that the concert was going on that night? How would you have known that there was a strings concert and that seventy-five percent of our elementary kids play strings? How would you know that? How would you know that you had an opportunity to go to this event? Now, one of the challenges to the opportunity is the space. I agree with that. That's a whole different issue. The opportunity to know that it exists is the open door. And so if you went on the website, I challenge you to do that now, you will get on the district calendar, the event. Will you get the time? No, because it wasn't there. Will you get the location? No, because it wasn't there. So guess what? Is that an opportunity as, as a person in this community who might like to see that show? Yes. And let me show you a couple other examples. I received two, again, this was correspondence, people that wanted to know about our Gift and Talented Program. So they searched the website. They had no idea that our program was called Advanced Learners. It did finally click in, and they did finally link up, but it took them a long time to find it. And it took them a long time to figure out how to read about it and to see it. And they couldn't find anything about the numbers of kids, the number, okay? Missed opportunity? Yeah, I'm saying. Do I want people in this community to know about what these seven people do every other Wednesday night? Knock their socks off to make this a neat place for kids to go to school and learn? You bet. Do we do that? No, it's the most thankless job, but, I'm sorry. But the point being, here's some examples, the strings concert, the safety issue. Here's, here's an opportunity where, yeah, parents are getting a letter, but they have questions. So they're stopping us in the streets instead of listening to sessions organized by somebody. And we've already got Dan and Joyce and Jared and over there. And here's, here's another perfect example, the school musical. Those guys do it all themselves. And ten percent minimum of those people come from out of district. And may not even be related to the people in the musical, because it is so incredibly excellent. So if you take three out of hundreds of events and things that we do in this district, do we meet the needs of our kids? Where do we talk about that? Go on the Cedarburgs School District website and read about how they meet the needs of their kids. So I, and when you look at the definition of opportunity, maybe Jeff and I are confused because one says, a set of circumstances that makes it possible to do something, and we can get punished. The other is a chance for promotion. So if you look at definition two, maybe what we're talking about very specifically fits. Thanks.
Thank you. I believe Peter.
You know, I think in an ideal world, we'd certainly have, it'd be great to have a communication person. I think we have a person, we have some pretty severe deficiencies in that department, particularly in strategic, and in having a communication plan that says, works for us in strategic sense. You know, you talk about missed opportunities, if we were, we have a great district, if we were to sell that a little better and improve the property values by point oh-one percent, we've paid for this position a thousand times over in terms of the community. And, but, there's also this, we have competing priorities. You know, would I spend a hundred thousand dollars on education research or working on mental health resources in our high school for students, students in need? My question for the committee is, have you looked at alternative ways of meeting the goals?
We had an extensive, I appreciate that. We had an extensive conversation about how to get the work done. And Dan has heard me say more than once, in other roles that I've had, I started with having interns. Because once you've established your fantastic grad assistant, and then people realize how much they're using that person, like, by gosh, now they're going to graduate, we need this, and then it gets moved up to a full-time professional staff. And so I did say, is there a model? But the kind of work that we're talking about here in this particular job does not get served well to have like a student intern doing it first. Because we identified the gap is not the day-to-day tasks that can be picked up by Maureen to update the website, or by the school, other support staff to update their newsletters and things like that. It is at this strategic level of advising the superintendent on places to be and people to be with, the two-way listening, who are we not engaged with that we really care about? We're only responding to the loudest voices that email us or that call us. And there's plenty of other people we care about that we just aren't connecting with right now. So it wasn't like, can we staff this up in the short term with like a volunteer or something like that? It's like, nope, this, that's not the kind of work that we scoped out.
Have you, have you looked for models in other school districts?
So that's why we brought this CISA II person in. That's why we brought it. We're like, there's four hundred districts, how are other people doing this? And we were quite surprised that at any point Dan wants to jump in, because he's, he's been advised on this in other superintendent contexts. How many districts other than us, we're the last ones almost in, in our greater Dane County area that don't have this position? So that was, I hate when we're the ones who aren't doing something, and it's like, why are we so behind on all this? So that, to me, was upsetting enough that it set the bar for, we aren't like asking for something that nobody else has. We're the last ones to the table that didn't get this years ago. And it's only because of our well-meaning staff filling in the gaps.
Can I address?
Yes, because you remember.
Because you asked the committee.
Yeah, 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 thank you.
So, yeah, we, I mean, this is actually what we started with was, when, as Dan pointed out, we kind of, we walked through everything. Here's, here's what we have, all the assets that we have. But when we got into who, who drives all those different cars, it was as many people as we had assets on the list. And so to your point, what we discovered the gap was, was actually that something around which that could orbit. There literally isn't anybody. So right now, what you're saying, it, so the, the committee's not suggesting a fourteen-person communication department. We're literally, what they came up with was a person, because right now, the person is de facto him or her, or a school principal or a school administrator. And so this opportunity, again, of bringing some of that knowledge back inside, but also considering that as a resource back to the district at the, at the school level. Because I really do think it would be. Part of the problem of what you're talking about is, even if you found all the, the grad assistant, who are they assisting?
Yeah, it would still be, yeah.
It would still be Dan and Joyce, right?
You need a senior person who can make the decision about strategy.
If I can jump in, you know, the two specific questions as far as, you know, Carrie answered part of that with, what do other school districts do? So in the survey that's attached there, you'll see that right now about twenty percent of Wisconsin school districts have a person dedicated to communications. And we're in about the thirteen percent, as far as, you know, the size of the district. So in Dane County, the two remaining districts of similar size that don't have this position are us and Wanakee. And Wanakee also is looking, you know, at this position. With regard to the competing interests, self-question, that's part of, that's a major reason I haven't brought this forth earlier is because of, the priority had to be teachers. We choose class size or maintain class size. Well, Jared has researched about, you know, possible funding initiatives, and we now are confident, in fact, we would propose that this would be paid for out of the community service fund, Fund eighty. So it does not impact our instructional budget.
Because we all said, how could we?
That's an important point.
Totally. Well, and but, I mean, and Peter, I appreciate that, because in the committee, we talked about, how do other schools do this? And they, and how are they prioritizing this?
That should have been on the document.
Do you have an opinion, legal opinion, that that would be?
Yeah.
That would be your.
An auditors, yeah. So that's something that more and more districts are doing.
That's how they're doing it.
What caught my attention is, I just noticed in the paper, Oshkosh just hired their recent person. It says it can be paid out of Fund eighty. Holy cow. So Jared, look into that, and sure enough, that's how many districts use it.
Don't talk too loudly, the legislature could change.
And that was the most important thing we talked about in our committee, because we all felt passionately about, we don't want to make a case for a position like this if anyone imagines it's taking away resources from the classroom. That's just not where we're at with our own values. That's just not where we're at with our own values. So it was really helpful to be thinking about, how do other districts do this and how do they pay for it? Because they are in the same financial constraints. And the Community Service Fund makes sense for a position like this, which is community engagement and by some definition, community service. So it, it really was helpful that it's not an instructional, it's not competing with instructional resources. That was an important thing we did talk about, too.
Yeah, that, that is a big difference, difference.
Jess? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I think this is, I think this is important. I appreciate the committee brought this forward as a way to solve our problems. I, I really think this is something to think about going forward.
It's just a matter of when, I think. And, and knowing that all these other districts went this years ago, I thought in good faith, bringing it back for this board to think about. Because we had people on the committee who looked at it and got to this point. Now I think it's for the board, and Dan will have opportunities to bring it back.
Well, I, I think I would just add that every year that I've been on the board, and whether we've talked about board goals or general district goals, there are, communications always right there at the top. And we, we never really have dealt with it the way we'd like to deal with it. Also, the CISA II person was previously the Sun Prairie Communications Director for 10 years before she, so that's how long they've had one. And they're continuing to have, they have a new one now, obviously, because she's moved to CISA II. But, so it's not, you know, some districts have had them for a longer time.
So I just want to clarify a couple of things. Like, these, these concerts are great, but we literally, I don't know if we do any more because my kids aren't in. We got, we got emails that said, or, don't invite your grandparents, only parents, because we don't have room for these people to come.
You know how I would have solved that? Is then you'd have a 1:00 and a 3:00 o'clock show. Or a 5:00 and a 7:00 o'clock show, or something like that. But I don't think that's an excuse. But Jeff, that's not an excuse to not communicate with the community. I mean, what, what you're saying as a capacity issue is a completely different way. What you first want to hear is, are there people in the community who want to be part of these things and who are being shut out? I want to hear that. I don't want to say, well, just don't tell them so they don't know. It's more like, no, listen to the.
I'm just saying, I'm not saying don't tell them, I'm saying we don't have a need there to do that because we're at our capacity.
Maybe it's not the best example.
But I was more saying, hear what they want.
And also, like, the musical, I think sells out, right? The musical sells out every year.
Don't not ask, don't not ask what they want. Find out what they want and figure out how to fill that.
You may.
So, and I know we're not doing it here now, but to me, and, and, and no offense at all, a missed opportunity is when we, a kid gets suspended and we didn't get a chance to find out, hit that kid when he needed to be hit. That, I mean, the time and effort that goes into that, if we could do that, then you're, you're saving everybody a ton of more time to free up other things. So that, that's, to me, is a missed opportunity. When, when a kid doesn't show up, he's truant. Our missed opportunity to hit that kid, why isn't he doing that? He gets suspended or, God forbid, expelled. Why didn't we have, where were we in that process that we could have hit that kid up to make sure that he wasn't sitting in front of us or sitting out of school?
The missed opportunity with the business owner, where that kid is when they're being truant, instead of being at school, and the business owner having the communication with us in the district to say, hey, we're noticing this. I mean, we just aren't having those conversations with enough of our partners in the community and even beyond those kinds of things, maybe.
Thank you, Susan.
Well, just briefly, I, I don't think, I don't think it's an either/or. Those are two very different kinds of situations. And we just heard if we're doing this out of, hey, funny, that's money that can't be used for social workers and that kind of stuff, to the same, you know, in the same extent. And also, the communication is about so much more than advertising musicals and concerts. That's not, that's not their main job. That's, that's like a, I don't even, it's like a, a very, very tiny fraction of any, of what they do. It's, it's the whole, it's being available all the time. And that's where it was people in the field listening to, they're, they talked about it. It's not just the crisis thing, it's not about referenda. It's not, we talked about that being a concern. We don't want people to think we're doing that because of, because we do, we can handle that. It's more the telling the story on a regular basis and building up the two-way communication on a more regular basis. And that's what I've heard this board talk about ever since I got on the board, as, you know. So I, I think, I think this is pretty exciting if we can make it work that way. So I thought it was, and the whole committee, the way the committee kind of talked and came to this was, it was just interesting.
Yeah.
More later on, so, you know.
Well, we started in September, and now it's March, and we had gotten to some deliverable for this group. And so now I feel like we're going to have Dan proceed and bring this back at some future point where it makes sense. But I just wanted to share that was a work of the committee.
Thank you. Dean and then Susan.
I, I want to, I want to thank you for the progress that you've made. Because I know when you started on this, on community engagement, but the enhancement, expansion of the committee and that sort of thing, I think has, has really, has really brought a broad range of ideas and things like that, that, that you will have left some legacy to, for us to pick up on.
Thank you, Dean.
Susan.
Dan, would you add the funding?
Yeah.
To page one, please?
That should have been on the document. Thank you.
I think, again, we had heard that, because I had been able to be at the meetings, but it's, it was clear from one moment on, that that was a really important thing to know more about. So I think it would be very, very helpful to have that on page one.
And I think, in terms of the committee report, no further questions for Michael, maybe. The last thing that I had for the committee report was getting to the end of this first cycle, having people volunteer and be appointed. Now we were looking ahead to what the board wants to do with this committee for next year. So I took the temperature of the current members, I have a little feedback form that they got at our last, most recent meeting, and I've asked them for next time to come back. And their options are strongly interested in reappointment to committee, possibly interested in reappointment to committee, or not interested in reappointment. And I'm collecting that from this group of people so that we can at least close this season with a recommendation to next year's board about who they have. And I, and I have to smile because the only ones that raced forward and handed them to me were at the end, all had marked strongly interested in reappointment. So I was like, well, that's a good sign, but there's a few who didn't turn them in yet. So we'll see, like, what the vibe is from people. But we have thought, and I really very much appreciate Dean's comment, because the people who've been invited in for these conversations have felt valued and wanted to stay engaged and have fun. And we were kind of laughing about our demented sense of fun if a committee meeting is fun. But it really has been fun working with that group. And there are many people who want to stay engaged. And to me, I think that that was the whole point in the first place. So this board will have to decide for next year what this committee's charge is and whether we want to appoint citizen members again. But I can say, the people who wanted to come back, which is really cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for engaging in the conversation.
All right. That brings, that brings us to our policy committee and Susan Fox.
It was really popular. Might as well be short, because we did meet again. We met on the 7th to go through the rest of the updates from the end of last year. And we set a next meeting for April 5th, but we have to change that. So I would like committee members to kind of, I, I had sent an email out, but Jeff and I mostly didn't hear from you, and whether the 9th works. So we'll get to that. So on your agenda tonight are, under possible action items, the new and revised policies that we had at the last meeting. And then the ones that we just plowed through on the 7th are in for a first reading under what is currently M1, but, you know, we'll be, follow your report later, I guess, for first reading. So that's all on the policy committee.
Thank you. That then takes us to our possible action items. The first of those being the instructional materials complaint, appeal process for consideration by the board.
I'll begin. So Doug Whitty from Boardman Clark is with us tonight and is going to help facilitate the board discussion on this process. So I'm going to give my seat for Doug.
Jen.
I'm sorry?
Were the committee informed that we were going to be talking about this tonight?
To public notice, maybe?
I know, it's true.
Still, it's not a relatively short notice.
Well, not, not for this part, but the next part is the problem.
The next part is probably what they would want to be, I think.
We're going to get to that, but I, was an individual invitation.
No. The intention was to discuss the process this evening. You're going to talk about that. We added the item in case the board felt they're ready to move forward behind that stamp, but, okay. But we didn't send an email or anything to let them know that. No.
Yeah, as I understand it, there is no requirement that we make a decision tonight about the appeal itself. We can, but it, we can decide as a board how we want to proceed after.
Right.
Correct. That's my understanding as well.
Do you want me to weigh out the options?
Yes, please.
Well, so I think the idea, when Dan contacted us and said he just wanted to, there was this appeal filed, you know, the first thing we looked at was, okay, look at the policy. And there's really not much in the policy about how that process should go forward. And so that was the genesis for putting it on the agenda, I think, for the board to consider, because it, it really isn't fleshed out in the written policies that exist now. So I think you've got a lot of options as far as what you can do. And so, you know, obviously, this complaint appeal is, is the, the spark to, to look at that. And so, you know, we looked at it in a couple of different ways, as far as what can you do, what should you do? And don't really have many constraints as far as what you can do. What you should do is obviously up to you. With the reminder that, you know, this is still a policy decision, so, you know, the, the process you come up with should be something that you think will work for any complaint that is, is risen about instructional materials, not, not specific to necessarily to kill a mockingbird and the complaint that issued. I mean, yes, that should be in your mind, but you want to come up with a process so that if you get an additional complaint next year or the year after, that you've got some process that you put in place that you're comfortable with, that you think is fair, it'll allow the board to make an informed decision about what it wants to do, and that it'll guide the district, you know, for more than just the specific complaint that's, that's in front of you right now. So that's kind of, I guess, the broader picture. And I don't know if, where you want to go from there as far as specifics. I think the board members received a memorandum that laid out some of the issues that we looked at and some of the ideas that you could do as far as, you know, as simple as you could just take the written materials that have been submitted so far, the complaint, the committee's recommendation, the appeal, and use that as the basis for, you know, your review. Or you could open it up to a, a broader, a broader look, which would include, look at the process entirely, saying, all right, have the director of instruction give us an idea of how do, how do instructional materials get in the curriculum in the first place? So just kind of take a step back so everybody understands that. And maybe you guys already have an understanding of that. But that would be one idea, is have the director of instruction, you know, tell you about that. Then you can hear from possibly the complainants about the substance of their, their complaint. Then talk, you know, let the director of instruction talk about what the committee did, what they reviewed, what they looked at, and why they made the recommendation. Then it could, then you could look at also the idea of the appeal that the family filed, and then possibly a rebuttal from the committee in some fashion, whether that's director of instruction or not. And then a bigger question is, do you want any public input? You know, similar to what you do at the beginning of your, your board meetings, kind of an open comment period, or not? I mean, you may decide that's not where you want to go. So any or all of those are pieces that you could consider. And, you know, I've probably missed some other ones that other people might think about as being helpful to the process. But that's kind of the broader consideration as far as, you know, what do you want to consider, how involved you want to get? And then some of the other considerations we've got in there about, you know, what, what should guide your review? You've got some criteria in the policy right now. Is it limited to that criteria? Should you, should you have other additional criteria to consider? So there's, there's quite a few different options out there that you could, that you can look at. So I don't know, if you'll start from there or where the, where the discussion goes from there.
I was hoping, thank you, I was hoping to hear from each board member if there's something they felt was particularly striking or caught their attention, or as even the committee prior did their review process, if there was a gap, a deficit, a concern that they had in that process. So I'd like to, with your indulgence, solicit if there are particular things that you think rise to the top of our discussion tonight. Or if you'd like to simply proceed through the memorandum in order, we could certainly do that as just a more organized, structural proceeding. Yes?
I had one question. I probably have 1,000 more as this continues. But the one that I came wanting to clarify is that we're managing this as an instructional materials complaint. But there's, and I, I thought the phrase used in one of these things about the complaint and appeal also include other allegations and broader comments beyond the instructional materials thing. And so how does that fit within the context of what we're discussing and dealing with?
Well, our purpose of putting that in there was, at least as, as we read the complaint that's been filed and the appeal that's been filed, there are some additional concerns that have been voiced by the family about inequities in the district or other things that they don't see and that they don't think are being handled correctly, and which I think, I think are broader than the issue of, should this book be in the English nine curriculum? Now, that may be a little part of some of the other stuff, you know, they're, they may be connected, but I, I don't know that you're going to solve, you know, for example, they're claiming, one of the claims they make is that there's inequities in the, in the discipline that's, that's given out between, and on a racial basis. That they, you know, I don't know that keeping this book or getting rid of this book is going to solve that issue. It may be part of that discussion, but I don't think, so that's what we meant by, there's broader issues out there. And I, I think from a complaint process, I don't know that you want to, as a complaint appeal process, that you want to dive into those bigger issues, because you'll never get out of those issues.
That's why I was asking the question, because it was, it could be framed so broadly as to encompass the entire environment of the high school. And, and, you know, and like, I mean, that's, that's all part of what the appeal and that kind of stuff included. And it just seems out of the scope of this policy that we're using, which is instructional materials.
I think it's very important not to conflate those two. Those are two very separate complaints. And this is the only one we're dealing with now, is the instructional materials complaint. And I think we have to make sure we're clear about that. The policy clearly needs some work, but it's what we have now, so we have to work with it. So I appreciate your willingness to put this memo together. I, I think, you know, I think in terms of an appeal, I, I would like to have public comment. I see it as appropriate as a special meeting as opposed to a board meeting, just because I see a longer conversation. And I think at a special meeting, we can set the rules, and I would, I would suggest that we have public comment at a special meeting. And we could also ask that it be taped if we do it that way. That's just my personal thought. I also think that as board members, we should minimally read through all these materials that the committee read. You know, we, it's a very, it's also a very different animal than we hear in expulsion hearing, because we have, even though we have a hearing examiner and they conduct the hearing, then we make a decision. That's not really an appeal, it's, it's just reviewing it. But we get the entire transcript, we get all the exhibits, we get all the same information. And, and this is a different process, but I still think it's important that we read all these materials. I know it's, it certainly made me dive in and start reading the book again. I read a couple of other books that I've had on my list for a long time. So I, I think, I think, I just think it's important that we think very carefully about it, for one thing. So I think we should all commit to that, which is one reason I was really alarmed to see, you know, the next piece put on our, on our agenda for tonight, because I thought, man, I'm not finished yet with all the things I want to think about. Just as a start. So, I guess I'll listen to what other people had to say, or some other thoughts too, but I'll...
Thank you. Peter?
I don't think that this is particularly complicated. I mean, I do think we need to, obviously, limit this discussion to review the material and filter out in our minds the parts of complaint that aren't relevant to that, because that's our, that's our job. I think, I think this belongs on our Wednesday night agenda, because that's what the public has come to expect for matters of public interest to the district, and I think our, you know, our public appearances portion serves to allow people so long as it's properly noticed to provide us the feedback. But our Wednesday night meetings are standard meetings are televised, and people come to expect, expect us to do these things, this kind of thing in a regular meeting on Wednesday night. I think we should reserve special meetings for things that are sort of of board interest, sort of, we have to have a workshop to work on a problem, or we have to, you know, ourselves, or, you know, we do annual evaluations and so on, and those are all appropriate subjects for a special meeting. But I think this is a pub, things that are sort of public interest, community interests belong in our Wednesday night and our special meetings, and we can go along if we have to. But I, that's what I think they go. As far as the process goes, I think we should let people, you know, invite comment at our, at our public comment period for our discussion. We should have any committee man and members who are registered in, being here available for questions, and any, and the facilitator available for questions. And then we should be presented with the documents and have a discussion amongst ourselves, and I don't think it's particularly complicated process.
Can I please clarify with you, currently with our public appearance, we have a limit of 15 total minutes? Would you see making an exception?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And we have in the past at, at other meetings, I remember in a, a meeting in, on...
It's why we have these limits. You mean those ones that went to one in the morning?
Right, exactly, but when you have, when you have something, I don't think, I don't think we would have hundreds of people show up to make public comments, but if it goes to half an hour, I don't have a problem with that.
Well, and the question is, could you adjust that, to answer your question, would you just adjust the wording on the agenda for that meeting to say a total time, well, I mean, two hours or something, then you basically have your listening session blocked in?
This, this is, that 15 minutes is, you know, means that, a little bit total amount of time, I mean, we can waive that at our discretion, and we, we do whatever we have.
But if you publish it this way, it's really different than what Susan was saying, of publishing a listening session with no end time site, the way we've gone to legislative hearings that the lines out the door, and then you just are there waiting for your turn to give comment. And that's a different kind of format.
Thank you.
You know, I almost want this to be in the minutes. I am, I am kind of, I'm absolutely shocked at the implication that this isn't a complicated process. This is an incredibly complicated process. We don't have a policy that tells us how to review this type of complaint. It says we can hear the appeal, but it doesn't say, like expulsion, accept, modify, or reject, it doesn't say that. We just got a legal memo that is, in case you didn't know this, three pages long, that says, these are all the choices that you have in terms of how you hear this appeal. And there, the issues that are so complicated, this is not just about a book. This is about the issue, this is about the historical site, this is about how it's taught, this is about how it's supervised, this is about how the kids in the classroom feel, this is about how the kids in the classroom are going to feel if we say yes or no to this appeal, this is about how the teachers are going to feel, this is about how the community's going to feel, this is incredibly complicated. And I went to a meeting on Monday and spoke with at least four incredibly prominent leadership African-American women about this issue. And they said, you need to have a discussion. That was their advice to me. They also gave an opinion about keeping or not keeping the book, but the relevant piece was, you need to have a discussion. So, I think the critical issue that we need to talk about is how do you want to, as a board, seven of you, process the appeal? And I think it is kind of, sorry.
Dean?
I, I kind of second some of Susan's thoughts there too. The documents in this case, and I can't imagine how they would change differently, is that we have, we have a lengthy complaint that is organized by the complainant, and, and the, the appeal eventually comes to us, has not much structure except, except a stream of consciousness that the complainant has, which, which is real, but I have a hard time separating all the issues out here. I, I don't know if it's, I, I don't know if it's a problem of the book, I don't know if it's, it's a problem that there's a lack of choices of other books, I don't, I, I can't figure out entirely whether, and I know these are all in there someplace, but they, it's not, there, there doesn't seem to be a clear definition of what the remedy is, except to remove it from the curriculum, and, or to put it as a sec, or to put it as a, as a optional book on a second list type of thing. So, I, I think that, I, I think that there needs to be some kind of structure to a complainant form that, that would help, and I, I think there's a lot of information that this complainant gave to us, but I think we need some kind of structure given to us on that form that would help frame the issue for me, because I don't know if it's, if it's simply because there are too many N words, or, or whether, should it be a, an optional book or not, and that sort of thing. So, it's, it's a, I, I think, I think that while the complainant had a lot of information, and it was certainly came from their perception and heart, it, it, we need, I think, help all complainants, this is probably better than many that we would get, but I would like to see some kind of structure or format that would help shape the issues, where it's in violation of policy or practice and that sort of thing, so that we can, so I could help frame my, my options for a resolution.
Thank you.
The problem, the problem with that, I mean, that's, that's a discussion for perhaps revising the policy relative to people making complaints about instructional materials. The problem is, we already have now an appeal in our lap, and we can't, and that, and we have a specific policy under which we have to hear that, that appeal at this point. If we were to go back and rewrite the policy before we hear this appeal, I think that's problematic. First of all, it'd take a long time.
I'm not asking for that.
Okay.
I thought there were two questions.
The question is, how do we handle this appeal? The policy says that it comes to the board and we make a decision, and I, my suggestion is that we let it come to the board, we have a discussion, and we make a decision. And you might be just completely right about what we do going forward for additional complaints, but the question is, what do we do with this one right now?
I agree with you.
Thank you, Susan.
The other thing that, that is difficult for me, when you talk about hearing the complaint, is I think it's really critical that the board clearly understand what the committee did. And effectively, I have a page plus a paragraph about what they did. So, they met on Tuesday, January 30th, they met for the first time to receive the complaint, the novel, the question, and their own material, they're given tools to review it, they came back, and it tells me what they discussed, but it doesn't tell me what their thoughts were in these discussions. So, when you look at the pieces that the policy talks about, did you look at this, the fourth inch, I don't have any real content about their findings on those issues. I appreciate that they discussed them, I appreciate being able to see the resources, but I was kind of looking to them for rationale, decided this based on these things. So, I'm still struggling with the pieces that I have.
Thank you, Kiri.
So, I first asked a question about the scope of what it is we're going to be wrangling with, and so my next question is about the role that we could play. So, I was seeing this as a decision for us about, and I, and I thought it was presented in the memo, that we have the choice whether our role is oversight of the committee's work that addressed this. Do we simply have an oversight role to confirm a committee was appointed, a committee met, they deliberated, the process was followed, a conclusion was reached? We're providing oversight that that happened and that a decision was reached? Or are we becoming a new committee and exploring new findings of fact? And I, I, I'm probably comfortable whichever way this word goes, because I can see a lot of gray area on how I live, and so it's like, well, if these people feel we're in an oversight role, this is a board that doesn't second guess teachers and doesn't, whatever, 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 it's fine. If this is a board that says, by God, bring everyone in, and we will listen to day and night testimony from everyone in the district, new findings of fact, where are we at in this, I, I get on board with that too. So, so what is our role as a board? And I'm wanting to do my due diligence as a board member, so I didn't know which direction this was going to go, so I read everything in the green folder before I came. I don't often come here and say, I read everything, I read everything before I came, because I, I wasn't sure if we were really going to get to taking a vote tonight or not, but it seems to me if we go the option of becoming a committee and exploring new findings of fact, that can't be done tonight. If we saw our role as confirming that we've had these actions taken, and the actions that were taken were acted in good faith and appropriate, we probably could make a consideration of that tonight. So, I, so I needed that kind of tree, I think, addressed as a root level before I could then further speak, but I will add, if we do go in the path of new findings of fact, I'm more inclined, what Susan said earlier, of publishing a listening session and having advance notice on it, and making it clear that it's in a place that's accessible and large and open to people, that we truly are having a public comment, and not, people well know that they're going to get a three-minute buzzer and the whole thing, it only happened in a few minutes, and there's nowhere to sit here. So, if we say it's at a regular board meeting, that would feel really different.
We keep the three minutes regardless.
Just mentioning, just mentioning that, that, that has a different feel to me, and I was more in line with having it as a separate thing. If we're going down the path of exploring where the community is on this, then, then I would see that as, as a consideration, not having it at a regular board meeting. But I wasn't even convinced we were, which way we were going.
Right.
And I didn't know, if you don't mind me asking, how, how you would approach asking that question in this kind of a context, and is that an okay question to decide how we perceive it?
I, I think that is appropriate, I mean, because the policy itself doesn't really, it doesn't give you, it, it does say, the board shall review the matter.
Right.
You know, so, which, if you would ask me, I would say that leans more towards an oversight function as opposed to starting the process anew with new findings of fact and taking testimony and things like that. But I don't think you're constrained, because just, just, there's just not much guidance in that policy.
The word review is whatever we want it to mean?
Yeah.
Because it says remove the material, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think it can be, but I don't, you're certainly not, you're not obligated to, you know, ignore what the committee did and start over. I mean, that kind of defeats the purpose of a committee in the first place. So, it's, it's not a, among other things, there's, there's a lot of issues with this policy. I mean, and again, redoing the policy is, is an issue for a different day, so you're faced with, you've got this policy.
How do we handle it?
How do you handle this complaint within the context of it right now? And I think you've got the options of doing, you know, those, going down either one of those paths.
The, the definition of the word review makes it start to be, the layperson starts thinking like we're speaking now in legal terms, we're like, what's the definition of is kind of stuff? However, is there something as precedent that would guide us in what we mean by review? I think, can we go there? What does the district mean by review? What would the, I mean...
Yeah, I haven't, I've not gone through all your policies to figure out every time the word review is used to see how many different contexts it might be used in, because I got a feeling it's very inconsistent, so...
So, we can't say this is what we mean by review, and it's either this or that?
I, I don't think it's going to be that simple.
Right, too bad. I just wanted to ask. So, so would it be appropriate in this setting, that for us to first decide that thing, are we an oversight review, or are we a new committee, exploration committee?
The definition?
I, I think that can be one of the things the board decides tonight, decide, okay, what, what role do we want to take?
So, I was feeling like if there was a whiteboard, I'd be putting that up there, like, here's the question that we have tonight, by how we answer them.
So, I, I believe Jeff had his hand, and that, I'll hear it.
I agree with Peter that I don't think this is that complicated. I think our role as board elected officials is to review it, and we can look at it any way we want. The fact that it is such a broad policy, we can do whatever we want. I don't think relooking at the process makes us a whole new committee, we're a board, and we're, that's what we're here for. I think it's important that we get public, I think, I mean, most of us have watched everything that's been said so far, and heard everything that's been said, so I don't think we're not up on this. I think one of the problems with the committee was there wasn't really much room for public discussion. It was just the committee, which was great, I mean, I trust the committee, but I think, I think it's important that we do have it on a Wednesday night with public discussion, with public comment, and I think it's very important that we invite the committees to be here, because I don't think it's fair or right to do, to make any decisions without them here. Maybe if we had a PR person, now I'm on board. But...
If you think they're modest.
So, we, I thought last, last meeting, set a priority to address the committee's concern ASAP, but obviously, we're not doing that now. So, I think it's important that we set it for the next meeting, public notice, anybody comment, and we have a discussion on where we want to go from there. I mean, if, if it's uphold the, the committee's findings, if it's tweak the committee's finding, if it's just to say thank you and move on, whatever it is, I think it's up to us, but I think it's important we do it the next meeting, and just get it behind us. I mean, this has been going on forever and ever, it's time for us. It's frustrating to me that it's got to this level, but let's just deal with it, because we're adults, let's just handle it, handle it next meeting with everything.
I think our next meeting's next week.
Yep.
It's a pretty quick turnaround, and the week after that is spring break.
Okay.
And just in general, I would prefer to give people more than a week's notice if we were going to be doing so. So, next week might be difficult.
Actually, I, unfortunately, because of the schedule, that is two weeks in a row, I try to schedule my trips around that, but I won't be able to make next meeting, so I appreciate it if we can hold it off to that first meeting in April.
I feel compelled to make a distinction. We currently have two pieces of action regarding the family. One is the title appeal, and the other is a separate, perhaps related complaint. So, I just want to be very clear that what we're dealing with tonight is the title of To Kill a Mockingbird. These other pieces are not agendized.
Right.
Okay.
But we, I just thought we made a, a promotion as a board to deal with, to help them quickly, as much as we can. Irregardless of, of...
Correct, and so materials were given out last week, and here we are.
Right.
Moving faster.
And the agenda that we're on right now is...
The process.
What process will we use for this review?
Right, and I thought...
So, I, I'm kind of hearing all kinds of things, but one thing is, I think that, that it is, it seems to me it is kind of one of oversight. It is one, I, I think, you know, to Dean's point about the complaint itself, I agree, you know, if you go through it, you can pull out some very specific points, but somebody needs to do that, I mean, we need to have a kind of a look, because, because I think the idea, and in the original complaint, it was easier to see, there were kind of three main points, and the committee kind of talked about those. This is a little broader, and there are more, more specific things to answer to, so I think that has to be defined first. And I think then, as I said, I think we all have to read all this material, which it sounds like everybody has at this point, so that's good. I think I definitely would like to see a public appearance. I don't have a problem with doing it during a regular board meeting, I, I'd like it to be one where it's not a real, like, the agenda, because I think I could see this discussion going an hour or so, you know, I, I don't, I don't think there'll be a lot of public appearances, we haven't had a lot, we haven't had much email contact, we haven't, you know, people are interested, but they're not really, I just think we have to make people aware, and that was my objection to scheduling the other piece, but now I'm doing what I just said. We have to, at this point right now, which is just what is our process going to be, and that's what, that's all we are discussing right now before we get to the next agenda.
Correct. I'm sorry, I don't know who...
I'm just going to talk about, about date. I'm unavailable the first week of April. We do have a board scheduled, a board meeting scheduled for the 28th, understanding that would be what, what...
That's Thursday.
Twenty first, that would be challenging to meet that need, but I think it's also difficult to, at this point, schedule a meeting for that first week of April if other people aren't unavailable, because generally, that's not a board scheduled night, I'm just saying not available that night.
Other question I have, yeah.
I'm in surgery on the 2nd.
Okay, so...
So, there we go, so we're jumping ahead, but let's...
Yeah, let's, let's pause for, hold calendars for just a second. I have, I need to return to our initial question, and that is, we currently have a Neola policy on our books, which now as we're living it, we are discovering gaps. We are discovering pieces that are cumbersome, pieces that are inadequate, pieces that maybe don't do the work that we wish they would do, and the, the only way you find that out is to live the policy. So, I think as a board, I'm trying to go back to Peter's point earlier, which is, is it truly the case that you cannot change a policy once you are in process? And I'm not advocating one way or the other. Is it the case that we simply need to take the policy as it stands now, interpret it Is it the case that we simply need to take the policy as it stands now, interpret it and move forward? And then take up this policy, you know, at other dates and times and committees and discussions and fine-tune this in a way that it actually responds in a way that Manona Grove wants it to as a board? That seems like a much bigger task to me than simply making a decision on this particular appeal. So I'm looking for a little more direction because I'm here, I heard one voice clearly make a decision about that and I'm interested in what other board members feel.
Maybe I'll just chime in just for a second, please.
Yes, please.
As far as whether you can amend the policy while you're in the middle of it. I mean, you've got a, you've got your own policy about how you go about policy, first reading, second reading. That, I don't think you can do. Well, you can't do it in a timely fashion, let's put it that way. So I would take that kind of off the table from a, from a practical standpoint. So I just wanted to mention that before we get too far.
That's why you're sitting here.
Yeah, thanks for the timely reminder.
Not only that, but I think it would be to invite additional complaints. You're changing the process on us in the midstream.
Not advocating, I'm simply...
I am, you know, myself, I'm prepared to start talking about this, to start discussing the merits of the case tonight, but I'm getting a sense of the board, perhaps the board's not ready to do that. I would suggest that we do it at our next board, at the first board meeting in April, which is the 11th. If we, well, people might disagree with me on that.
I was just saying, I was ready tonight.
If we feel that there's additional time required, then we could have a public listening session at six or 6:30 or something like that before the meeting. I think that that's a reasonable way to do that. It keeps us within our usual plan. And then in terms of what we do, I think because of the current state of the committee, of the policy, we're just going to have to review and discuss that as we go along. And if that discussion goes in, go in directions that we take it. And if people object to it going in particular directions, they can make that point at the time and we can, you know, work from there. But I think that that's, that's just what we have to do, given what we're given, given at this point.
Thank you, I'd like to go around the table, Carrie.
Thank you. So I had another question about the timeliness, timing question, which is, we will have a public election the first week of April and there are three seats up for election.
Still yours.
Do we, I know, bye, so, so do we have a intentional decision-making in our timeliness that would lead us to say, if we don't hit a window now in March and April, that the new board members coming in need opportunity to get up to speed? Or how does that work? Because there's this whole rule and like, so you start and the next night you're taking a vote on something that other board members have been working on, like, how does that actually work?
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to answer that first, yeah. So I, I mean, I, from a timeless standpoint, if the new board is elected and the decision hasn't been made on this appeal, the new board will have to make a decision on that appeal. Whether that requires them to just read what's going on or some additional meeting, that's a different question. But I think if, I think if somebody's suggesting the 11th or some other day before the elect, before the new board would take office, it'll probably be decided that night in some, some fashion.
And the weirdness that I'm anticipating with that is then you have lame duck people voting on something? And I'm only saying because I follow federal things and how we couldn't get a Supreme Court justice appointed for some ridiculous period of time. Is that a legitimate process for us to be talking about? That we would be past an election, we know who the people are, they weren't going to be there that night, but it would still be timely for them to be there two nights, you know, a meeting later in two weeks? Like, should those be the people and does that screw up? Is that something that we should be mindful of?
The board is an ongoing continuing, but...
It's your union board, right? It's the dates of complaints.
Congress isn't...
So I'm just not asking it.
Actually, they're not.
I'm just asking it.
Thank you, Susan.
Yeah, I think that's not an issue because if you wanted to argue for your win, but you could make that argument right now. I mean, it's not, that's not, that's just not an issue. But I think, I think I'm not hearing anybody say they want more information than what we have here. So that, to me, answers one question because when I looked through all the things we could do and there was a lot of other stuff, and I'm not hearing anybody suggesting that. So it's sounding to me like there's a consensus to, one, have public input, two, review all the documents we have, three, go through the complaint, make sure we hit all the points that were, that they want answers to, and then have a discussion based on that. That's what I think I'm hearing. And that we would like to do it at a regularly scheduled meeting because I would agree, more people are going to be aware of it if we do it that way. I would just hope the meeting's not real long as far as, and I take seriously the point. That was, I think it isn't, I think we didn't give enough notice tonight. When I hear people say they're ready to act tonight, one of my big concerns was, this meeting was posted Friday as for a discussion of the process only, and it was changed Monday afternoon. Now, if you're a member of the public who's been following this and you look at the agenda over the weekend, which a lot of people do, you don't know the agenda's been changed and, oh, they're going to make a decision tonight. There's no way to tell all those people. I emailed Jeff because I knew he was interested. Otherwise, he wouldn't have known that that was a possibility. And so I think that's wrong for us to make a decision tonight just based on that fact alone. I've heard a lot of talk on this board about transparency and I was kind of shocked to hear that suggestion come up and see it on the agenda, I thought it was really misplaced. So I really strongly feel we should not do that tonight as part of the process. So I think if we feel like we've got the process, then I think we're ready to go and schedule it on whatever meeting everybody decides is the best one. I mean, if Peter can't be here next week, it's probably Dean's, maybe, not likely, you don't know.
He was kicking me out the next day, so...
Oh, so maybe he'll be here, yeah.
I'll maybe if they bring me in in a gurney. Judy comes.
That's it, it does, apparently.
And I paid well, too.
In fact, I just have a point, a question for what you had laid out. You said, part of, you've gotten us information, but go through, and you said, go through the complaint, but you make sure you answer those questions. So I want to, just to check, you meant the complaint or the appeal? Because there's a big difference between those two documents.
Right, no, I'm sorry, I missed the book, I meant the appeal. But as I read through it, it was hard, I mean, to Dean's point, I was kind of going through...
And you mean the appeal as it relates to the book, not by the extraneous issues?
Correct, just the book, I think it's, yeah, very important to stick just to the book.
And to clarify my understanding of that, when you were saying earlier, Susan, I need to know, pull out what are the points in the appeal that we will address? Very first thing I said tonight is what is in the scope of this? And I think it's possible we could go through the appeal and pull out points and then say, not relevant to an instructional materials complaint on some of the things. Because there, I just am needing to make sure, we're talking about the same thing, about what are the points we're going to address? Some of them, points in the appeal might be things that we are out of scope of this particular...
Right, just, just related to the book, correct.
Because there's a lot peppered in there.
Yeah, there is, yeah.
I basically agree with that piece. I think that what we have to decide tonight, I think we're still struggling with that. And if we start with one and make that decision tonight, I think we'll be in better shape. And that is, what the board policy says is, the board shall, mandatory statutory language, review the matter. So what does "review the matter" mean to us? And we build the parameters for that. By definition, it's a formal assessment or examination of something with the possibility of instituting change if necessary. So again, we need to talk about what we're going to do to review the material. And one of the pieces, and I'm just going to add this as a kind of a PS to that thought. So we have to decide what the review's going to be. One of the things that was, that was difficult for me in the notes that we got from the committee or the report we got from the committee, there are four specific things that the policy wanted the committee to review. And it's one, two, and three on page three of the policy. And I'm having trouble seeing their response to those four things. That was in fact a note in the appeal. So I think we have to decide whether or not that's, basically, I think the issue is the book. But if they're appealing the committee decision, then do we, as part of our review, comment on... If, see, I mean, I think we should be taking minutes of these committee meetings. And if we had that, I'm sure these answers would be...
They were added, like, they have minutes from those committees.
Okay, and those questions may be answered in the minutes, okay? So I just think we need to make sure that we follow the policy that we have while we're in the middle of it. I don't like it either, but it's what we have. And then we have to decide what the review is, what the process is.
Can I ask another question about timeliness or understanding of that?
Sure, and then I would need to go back to Jeff.
This original process started in December prior to the beginning of the spring semester. And I'm not unaware that that timing at the holidays presented some challenge and then the next semester started. And so I have a ninth grader who's reading the book right this minute, it's on chapter 23, he's probably behind. I think he's supposed to be further than that. So I know that it's going on now, so this timeliness thing and the expectations of timeliness, we couldn't possibly have turned it around in a week in such a fast manner that would have made a decision prior to the spring semester. So now we're in it and we're kind of past the point of decision-making for the implementation of it in this particular part of the ninth grade English. So is timeliness still then, we're on track before the end of the semester kind of timeliness versus the very next opportunity that we have a board meeting to, you know? How do we feel about timeliness? Because I think about things in cycles. And this was brought up in a way that maybe could have been decided prior to the next group of students experiencing this. But that window was missed, they're experiencing it. So now the next opportunity is before the next window of students experiencing it. So I kind of feel timeliness in this case. They missed the window of the spring, they're having it. So the next time to be timely is before the next group of students has it. And I don't know enough about the curriculum cycle to know when, when it would be then planned for in such a way that it's timely. But right now, we missed this spring semester, clearly they're having it. So I had that question about timeliness also.
Well, I think to that, I don't think there was ever an expectation that a decision would have been made for this year because of what teachers, the kind of planning that they put into teaching their units, that you could never do that. So I don't, I don't think, so there's no rush. That's why, as I said, when I saw that the possible action got added, I thought, there is no rush, except that we'd like to settle it. And the only rush is, I think it is worth settling it with this board because this board's been wrestling with it and we've read all the stuff. So that's the only time it's like, I see. And if we only have, we have two more regular board meetings because the new board takes their seats after the fourth Monday in April, right? So they will be the second April meeting. So we have next week and the 11th, unless we do a special meeting, those are the options. If we're at that, we're not, I don't know if we're at that point yet.
That's why I should ask him the timeliness thing. Like, is it really about timeliness to this board? Is it timeliness to the next group of students who would be experiencing this? Is it timeliness to the curriculum planning calendar so that the teachers have enough time to respond? Or what is the, how do we interpret timeliness? And that drives to me how much opportunity we have to make sure all board members are here, they're not on vacation, they're not in Peru or some other place.
Not going to Peru until September.
All right, yeah, time, we'll have it settled by then.
Okay, thank you, I'd like to finish, please, with Jeff and Dean.
I'm sorry, what was the question? What I think we should do, I think we should do it at the next possible meeting where we're all attended. I want to, I do want to say that I was prepared to talk about it tonight. And that's because, even though it said, it came out on Friday, the appeals process, we got an email a week ago that said, we'll agendize this under possible action items for a regular meeting on the 14th. So that's kind of what I was going off, so I was surprised that we got that on the, that it came out that on Friday. So that's, had we, you know, had it done that, we would have had it on...
The public notice part that...
Well, I mean, the same, we were told on last Monday that it was going to be under possible action items.
Right, the public didn't see that on that agenda, though.
Right, it didn't, so that's why we didn't, so I was like, yeah. So I just, I don't think it's that hard and complicated. I think we should get public opinion, have a discussion like we do everything else. I mean, we spend, we approve a budget of $33 million so we can handle a book discussion.
So I'm hearing both the public comment and the open meeting?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I agree with public comment, open meeting, it has to be done while this board, before the changeover. And I think we, we deal with the record. I would like to have, in my judgment, I'd like to have some opinion on what, what is the range of our options to some extent? Because it appears to me that there's, that there's the disposition of the book. And are there any other, you know, there doesn't seem to be a, there's a longer list of options from the data that I got than from the complaint that I read, let's put it that way.
Well, except, our only task is to either confirm or reverse the decision of the review committee, that's it. For this piece, we don't know what else is coming down the pipe, but that's all we're talking about.
Our policy doesn't specify that.
Right, I think it can be needed.
Well, I mean, it's a, it's a hearing and appeal of the decision of the previous committee. So I'm not sure what else review, reviewing...
Doesn't say appeal, it says review.
Right, since they have the right to.
That's the view.
That's the question, whether it's an oversight or a whole new fact-finding mission.
Well, I just wasn't hearing anybody say they wanted a whole new fact. If we do, then that's a whole other story. I was, I didn't hear that last night, that's right. That was what I was just trying to get people to say, if they really want, start from the beginning. Because here's the exact wording, "The board shall review the matter and advise the individual in writing of a decision as soon as possible." Prior to that, it says, "The individuals may appeal the superintendent's recommendation within five business days to the board. The written appeal and all written material relating to it shall be referred to board for consideration," which we have. So that's the sum total of our guidance, okay? So it seems very clear from that first sentence, though, that our job is to review the appeal.
The material.
I mean, to review the, review the material.
It actually says, "Review the material."
Right, right.
That was the thing.
Yeah.
Right, because they appealed it to, they appealed their own task.
It says, "The matter..."
I'm sorry, I have to hear it, the matter, yeah.
It does not say material.
Right, it says matter.
So we've got to read the words as they're written and make the decision.
That's right, review the matter.
So it is, it is constrained, it is dealing with the book, period.
That's right.
Okay, that's, that's all I meant. And if, and I haven't heard anybody say this yet, they want more information than what we already have, that's what we're here to decide right now.
The more information to me is public comment.
Okay.
And that's, to me, that's material and substantive.
Correct, okay.
So if we are deciding that we're going with public comment, that's a new material and then that's new findings of fact to me, as opposed to reviewing what was already provided?
Review the matter.
Review the...
Review the matter, that's, that's actually our key words, review the matter.
And what's the matter?
Dean, are you concluded? I just want to make sure.
I'm concluded.
Thank you. And Peter, and then...
I would just comment, I think this board should finish it, which means we have it till the end of April, correct?
We have it to April's 11th.
There's March 21st and April 11th.
Isn't there not the second meeting in April, is that the new board?
That's when you...
That's the new board, so we have to do it the April 11th. If, if we, if we can't do it on April 11th, then that would, that's what we'd call a special meeting to do, to continue the discussion. And if we don't make a conclusion by the end of the April 11th meeting...
I don't see any reason why I wouldn't go there.
I don't see any reason why.
I don't know what your agenda looks like, can you keep it short?
We can now.
What are the possible dates?
April 11th.
Jeff, and then Carrie.
I just want to say, if we have public comment, that's not new standings, findings of fact. That's just getting the, the temperature of the community as elected reps, right? And like, things aren't, like, for instance, gay marriage, it's law now. That doesn't mean it's okay now and it wasn't then. It's, the public has come along to a different area. We're not fighting, the book is the book is the book. We want to, we want to see how our community feels about it and what they have to say about it. It's not changing the statements of fact, fact stays the same. We just want to get the temperature of our community, how they feel. It's new because we are a community school. We want to reach out to the community, we're trying to work our communication better. So I, I think, I think it's great to have community, I think it's important to have community comments, but it doesn't change the facts of the case.
Well, if you take out the word "fact" and just say "new findings", the only purpose to have public comment is because there will be new findings. Otherwise, I would have everything we need already. And so I'm prepared for there to be new findings that would then be applied in my thinking about this? I mean, I hear what you're saying, a fact is like two plus two is four, okay, fine. But I, but I meant findings of fact in the sense of like findings. And so if, if that's going to be going on and will influence the decision-making, that's a different path. And I was prepared for that, but I was also like, well, maybe that's just not how this board is going to go and we're going to make the decision based only on what we were provided and supposed to have read. So that's it. Lost it.
Understood.
I think we, I think we're ready to move on.
I think we're...
I think we've beaten this to death.
Gasping, yes, a little bit. Okay. Do you have any further...
No, yeah, I do. So I want to know what I should communicate to our staff. Are you expecting a comment from any of our staff that they should prepare for? Do you expect staff to be here available to answer questions? Who would you like available?
My proposal is that we would request members of the committee to be present for questions if there's anything we need to clarify. My proposal is that we would request members of the committee to be present for questions if there's anything we need to clarify.
The review committee?
The review committee, yeah. That's would be my suggestion.
Are there other board members that you should...
Yeah, right, and that's, yeah, that's my suggestion for the board to consider.
I would say, I would, the English department can weigh in, I wouldn't expect them, but I don't think it's mandatory. If they want to be here, that'd be great, because I think part of it is too, is how we teach the book, and I think that isn't necessarily out there, I don't think we have a full picture of that yet, but if somebody could ask clarifying questions, that'd be great.
That's a question I'd ask to the council. It seems to me, if we go back to this issue, if we go back to the English department and how they teach the book and all of those kinds of things, that we're reopening the case, we know that. How's that for a legal term?
Which we kind of are, if we're taking public comment.
It says, "Review the matter."
Yeah, I mean, the only thing that I point to in the committee charge under your policy is the four criteria they're supposed to look at is, and I'll read them to you, it's one, two, three, and four, is the use being made of the material. So if you've got a question as to how the English department is using it instructionally, it might be a valid question for the committee. It strikes me perhaps as more an appropriate thing to look at for the future curriculum committee to decide, all right, how are we going to teach this book moving forward? And maybe that's not satisfactory to you guys as a board, as far as...
That's kind of what we're deciding anyway, because...
Well, you're going to decide to a certain extent, are you going to teach this book or not teach this book?
Right.
Right now.
But my reading of the committee's decision is that it did not really discuss the teaching of the book or if the teacher had professional development or any of those kinds of things. That's, those are issues that are beyond the record, I think.
And there was an indication there, at least, that there were minutes from the meetings that maybe shed light on that? I don't, I've not read the minutes.
I just read them.
Oh, you didn't, okay.
Somehow those got posted late today, because they went up earlier, but...
Okay, Susan.
Okay, Carrie, and then, okay.
Dan's question about our expectations or hopes for teachers? I don't know whether teachers would be...
No, I said, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I heard a funny man say that.
It was deferred, I apologize if it was not a mutual deferment.
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay?
I didn't realize what you're going to do, I was deferring from me.
Let's revisit.
The reason I wanted to speak in that order, and sorry, is because I wanted to speak to Doug's point again. And that is, I have in fact seen that the minutes of the meeting were posted, and there is no documentation in the minutes about the four criteria. And I still don't see those in the report. And that is a piece of what we have to review according to policy. And so I'm struggling with the ability to review it without a comment from the committee about the appropriateness of the material for the age and maturity level. The accuracy, just a statement, the accuracy of the material, you know, it's nonfiction. The objectivity of the material, again, we need to regard the policy. And the use being made of the material. You can use the extra material to make assumptions about that based on the English, but this was supposed to be discussed by the committee and as part of their decision-making process.
So currently, our policy does not make a specific request that minutes be taken at those meetings, so that is perhaps a future consideration.
Would they be in the report?
Our administrative guidelines do.
I see, well...
And they do, they are minutes, because we have, yeah.
But, yes, there are minutes, I'm just trying to clarify with you, Susan, that they're inadequate or they don't speak to what you wish they would have?
To what the policy requires, and so...
So you'd like it enumerated for each of those items?
And just to be, in Spanish, just to be completely accurate, but shall be guided by, doesn't require findings or...
Finding, but shall be guided, so I want to at least know that there, these four things were part of the process.
Can I speak to that?
Yes, please.
At the first committee meeting, it was very clear, each of those four points were given as a charge to the committee. These are the four things you will consider. They were given two weeks to review all the materials and read the book, using those four criterion as their frame of reference. And so when they came back to have a discussion, it wasn't that each point was pulled out one by one, that those four things were given as a charge to the committee to guide their considerations.
And then, can I just follow up, because I think I heard you say, well, you emphasized the word "guide", is that kind of what you would understand to be guided by?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Carrie, thank you.
The question about teachers or staff being here, would they automatically be eligible to present during public comments? Or is that limited to only residents of the school district when we take public comments?
Nobody, anybody can give a couple of comments.
So I guess that's maybe something to just make sure people are aware, that they're encouraged and welcome if there's public comments and anyone wants to come.
And that's what I want to clarify, if you want to invite them to attend for public comment, or do you want them actually sitting at the table and having a dialogue and be available to answer questions?
The committee.
Well, or, I think those are two very different things, and I will say this.
I don't know, I'm asking who, who's...
No, I'm thinking the English department, the teachers themselves.
I wasn't, I was trying to find out what you, who you were thinking of.
Yeah, that's what I want to know, is do you want representatives from the English department here, or any other staff members?
I welcome input, sorry, I didn't raise my hand.
Peter?
From anybody who wishes to give it to us.
Second.
And so I think notifying people that we will be here for discussion. I think if anybody wants to be here, in case we have any questions, I think that that's important. If somebody wants to make a written statement and add it to the record here from the English department, I'm sure it would be helpful, useful information. You might want to invite people to, to inform people that we're going to do this, it's open-ended. And if they wanted to comment to us in writing, or come make a statement, or be available for questions, I think that that would be great.
Thank you, Susan.
Hi. And Dean. I totally agree, and again, having Lisa be able to speak right now, right this minute, was incredibly helpful information, so kind of as chair of the committee, I think it would be really helpful to have her at that table so we can ask her about things that may have happened in those meetings. Having attended, you know, the last one, but not the other two, I didn't have the same feel about it, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Dean.
Well, it seems to me that if we are to, and I'm asking Dan Olson, your vocal, no, that's, no.
No, here, I'll just turn that over.
Okay, I'll ask the council. It would seem to me that if we have all the committee members and the English department that were, this is not a review of the...
Yeah, this is ours.
Of the decision that was made by a committee. That we could maybe have the committee here to ask their thinking, but it seems to me, if you end up redoing it, why do we have, why did we have a committee? Whether they did a great job or didn't do a great job, it's, they've done their job, and they filed a report. And it seems to me that current policy says, our job is to review the work of the committee and not use a, I'm not a lawyer, but how about a trial deno...
You want to use that term again, don't you?
That's why I asked the question. Dean, that's exactly why I asked the question like eighty hours ago, about are we just providing oversight for this, or are we doing new findings and a new, or are we, whatever, do we become a new committee and explore new findings? And I really meant that sincerely, and so I hear what you're saying. We didn't go around and say, how many of us think we're strictly limiting ourselves to what's already in front of us, and how many of us think we should be soliciting all kinds of input and new things? We really didn't go around doing that, so I don't know where every individual is. But what you said makes me think your attitude was, we are not refinding this entire case, we're simply looking at what was already done.
It seems to me, we have a record, we could bring some of the people in to talk to them, but we have a record, and if we do anything else, we're redoing it.
But don't you think that bringing any of the people in opens that window? I do.
It would open some of it, but I would, I would question, I would question that. I would say, I think, I think we're supposed to act like a Supreme Court, aren't we, to get a document in front of us?
The policy says, "Review the matter." It does not say, "Review the decision," do not say, "Review the committee's work," does the process, it says, "Review the matter."
I stand corrected.
And I have, and I have to say, I think that that's appropriate, because we as a board are the unique intersection of the community values in the school district, which means we have a unique thing to bring here, not just a review of what's happened in the process.
Intersectionality.
That's what we're here for, bring community values to the school district.
Yeah, where does this lead us?
Where'd we land, did we land on, we would like, we'd be here if they can, and if teachers feel like they would like to be here, they can, but they're not required, I mean, I don't, I'm not requiring teachers to be here.
And we're talking about doing this on April eleventh?
Yeah.
So in my opinion, that's plenty of notice for anybody to prepare appropriate comment, limit themselves to the three minutes. I think that's reasonable, if it was next week, you know, I'd have to do that.
We're not asking all these people for comments, we're just saying...
We're inviting them, and genuinely inviting them in a way where we mean they could reasonably be here. It's not like, oh, we invited them, but it was Friday afternoon for a Monday thing, you know? So we're inviting them, this is plenty of weeks' notice. The other question that was in our notes for today is the question of, do we wish to hire an appointed hearing officer to assist with conducting the appeal procedure? I am always speaking for myself, yeah, I think it's, thank you for being here, and I think it is helpful to have expertise here to guide us, so we don't totally go off the rails. So I personally would say, yes, I appreciate, I've always appreciated when we're staffed and advised professionally. Personally, thank you for being here, I don't even want to know what it costs, but I really appreciate it.
Yeah, it's different, different chemicals, that's okay.
It's a facilitator, not, yeah.
I appreciate it.
My comment on that would be, because if there was a set of rules that we had laid out in policy or law by which we had to conduct ourselves in terms of this appeal, then I would agree with you, that's something complex. But we don't have that, it's really just what this board decides. And so I don't think, I think a, I think a facilitator is not necessary in this case.
Sometimes a facilitator would add their first item of business, establish the rules of the night, kind of.
But the rules are this board's to decide.
That night?
By the policy, the rules are this board's to decide, not a facilitator's to decide.
That's why we got the three-page legal memo saying, you have to decide.
Which, yeah, and it says...
Do we wish to hire an appointed hearing officer?
That would be like, that would be, that would be, we'd be turning it over to them, right? I mean, that's not what I think.
I had to assist with conducting the appeal procedure.
Yeah, I mean, as we meant that, in...
I read it as to assist us in talking.
It would be to assist in conducting the hearing. We would not be making a decision or recommendation to you guys at all.
So you wouldn't use the word hearing examiner, or that probably was not particularly accurate.
Yeah, hearing officer is probably not, not the best word, but...
I understand, I understood why you had...
Yes, before we go down a deep, dark road on this discussion, does anybody else think we should have a facilitator? One, two, really?
No. Absolutely, we're not spending another nickel on this.
So what you're asking is, does anyone else, in addition to me, think it's helpful to have an additional person to guide the conversation while we're having it on that night, and might be a person to help us establish what are the rules of engagement, for example? And I think it would be helpful, because I've seen this board in action. So I would like to have somebody here.
I'm happy with only Duck.
I agree. Okay. Do you want, do you want to get consensus on that, that'll help, let's do that right now? Get consensus on whether or not we want a facilitator.
How many people have to want it for it to happen?
Four.
By whose rules?
How enticing is the board?
Just asking. Peter's rules.
Uh-huh, because of what a rule...
Okay, one person was not enough for consensus before.
Let's, let us please not go back to that territory.
Let's get a number and see if we feel that's consensus, then we can ask two questions, let's just do it.
If it's only Susan and I that want an additional person here, I hear that. Dean, you don't want anyone else here that night to facilitate us?
You don't think you need someone to help us through this process?
I think we need a lot of help, but yes, I agree, we don't need anybody to help us.
And Jeff already said he doesn't want to be, I didn't hear what Susan thought.
I don't particularly think it would be helpful in this situation.
I think we can get through it.
Okay.
I don't think, having seen this board operate with outside facilities or with facility, I'm not sure there's that much difference. Unfortunately, I don't, I think it's ridiculous.
Shall we review briefly?
Probably messy.
What I'm understanding is, April eleventh is our target date for the open meeting. What I'm understanding is that we want to broadcast that public comment is available to those who wish to, along with written comment can be submitted, which is standard, but I'm almost at a loss here. We will not be requesting a facilitator to assist us that night, that was established. Are there any other big rocks that my tired brain has missed?
You would like the committee members to be present?
We will be inviting or requesting, or...
If they're able to.
If they're able.
I'm concerned about, you know, we've asked a number of volunteers to be in that committee, and now they've made their decision, I'm not so sure what value to question the work that they've done.
I'm inclined to agree, but I'm a little uncomfortable with, I feel like we're kind of putting them on the spot. I mean, they had an open, public discussion, four of us were here to listen to the whole thing, five of us, actually. I'm not sure, I think it's an expectation we should have of them, the more I think about it.
Susan.
The person I really need here is Lisa, mainly, and if she wants to, yeah, sorry, you're probably going to be in Hawaii that night.
Okay, Lisa will not be available on April eleventh.
I thought we'd go to Hawaii.
I feel confident that I was president in the meetings, as Jennifer, I think we can answer any questions on behalf of the committee.
I need to ask with all board members, what's the appropriateness in board members having conversation with Lisa in the meantime?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just stating this out loud, is that appropriate? Because you will not be at our eleventh meeting, can we have simply conversation? If we have clarif... Yes, individually, not as a group.
Individually you can, not as a group, I mean...
Correct.
And then you can't talk about it.
Correct, you may not discuss it.
About what you talked with, yes.
That is correct. Just want to be clear.
We wish to avoid the walking quorum issue, so...
You're going to get seven private phone calls.
Or a lot of coffee, no, okay.
I'm not calling you, Lisa.
I just want to be clear, all right? Anything else at this time?
No.
Thank you so much. Would anyone else like a quick two-minute stretch break, or shall we proceed into policy? I'm asking.
Okay.
All right?
Yes.
All right, we'll stay.
We do have to go to the next agenda.
Yes, I...
We just need to...
I'm just checking in with the board, thank you very much for being here tonight.
You're welcome.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
Sounds like it's been my last chance to meet you, you run off the board?
I was trying to have you come back, it was nonstarter.
Now you know it's like to be like two to seven.
No, I know, Mike said, anyway. I'm giving a hard time. I wish.
Since we have consensus, do we have to reform? So we already have consensus to move it to April eleventh?
A motion.
There's not a bunch, we can, we can always, it's very easy, yeah, just ask for, just say you're going to skip the next, based on your... I trust you'll put on the eleven.
Thank you for the reminder, thank you for that.
What did she say?
Oh, my goodness. We continue our work under the possible action item portion of our agenda. Item two, instructional materials complaint, appeal. I will ask for a motion to have that moved to our meeting on April eleventh. Thank you, Susan, a second, thank you, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, say nay. That agenda item has now been moved to April eleventh, thank you. We now move on to item three, new and revised board policies. This is a second reading for the items, and if you really want me to read them all out, I'm happy to, but they are there, they've been there at a previous reading. Yes, please, go ahead.
Okay, there was, do you want to address this, or you want to just address it? There was one policy that we approved it and forwarded it, so you saw it as a first read, and it's zero, one, four, four compensation. And it's 0144 compensation, which Neola had updated that pursuant to Wisconsin Act nine, right?
Right.
To put in language that if you're an elected board member, you can decline any compensation for your service on the board, and you have to do it within a certain timeframe, and they laid that out. That's what the green language is about. So the question was raised in the policy committee, well, what about, what if you're a sitting board member and you're midterm? Don't you have that same right? And Dan questioned our legal counsel, and they said, yes, it actually you do, and they sent some language. So in the document, before you open the policy itself, this is printed, but because I thought, you can't look at both of those at the same time on these computers, I just sent you a hard copy. We would propose tonight to amend this policy to include this sentence that's in red, that board members not included. It would follow this green sentence. If you open the 0144.1 compensation, the green sentence that talks about board members receiving a salary and having the right to decline them once they're elected. Following that sentence as a standalone sentence, new paragraph would be this one that's in red in the hard copy you have, saying board members not included in the preceding sentence may refuse to accept the salary by providing notice to the district clerk and treasurer at least thirty days before the start of the board member's next taxable year. Although the notification applies only to that taxable year, and that's pursuant to statute. Board members may renew the refusal to accept the salary by sending timely annual notification. So it's just adding that option. That's all. And I suppose that would come with, we would have to move to amend it, because this was already submitted as a first read, so that we would have a motion to accept this policy and then amend it. Jennifer, you want?
Peter, thank you.
I move approval of the revised policies as listed in the board docs recommended action, including the amendment to policy 0144.1 that was, that is included in the memo.
Thank you.
Second.
Further discussion?
Yeah, it's easy.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. That amendment has been approved. Okay.
The motion.
The motion.
All of it, yeah, all of it.
Yes.
All of it.
Those processes.
Yes. Deep breath. Deep breath, yeah. All right, that moves us then to item four and our 2018-2019 preliminary certified staffing plan.
Okay, so you, the updated document was just added today. You have a hard copy before you. Two weeks ago, the previous board meeting, the major changes were we're asking for an additional halftime counselor at winter club. The other changes in the elementary grades were things we discussed really back in January when we're looking to open enrollment based on class size. And so that's just grades moving through. And then in the, what's happened in the last two weeks is the middle school and high school have been working on their course requests, you know, for electives and so on. And so you see some very minor changes, and those are reflective of a larger eighth grade class moving into the high school. So we actually have a slight reduction for world language, art, and FIAID at Glacial Drumloom next year because of that large class moving out. But then a slight increase at the high school with a larger class moving in. The net effect of that change is it is minimal. World language actually a decrease overall of .17. An art increase of .15, and then FIAID decrease of .24. The net really between those two schools is what that's reflected of.
Is that because class size is our figure at the high school?
Well, and the staff is able to handle that capacity. We added staffs last year at the high school, so in some cases we're able to then absorb that. Now, the other thing to keep in mind on these FTEs, these are based on the contracts that teachers receive. At the high school, we always have a number of teachers that will teach an overload class for some additional compensation, but that doesn't change their contract. So for example, if we have an English teacher that takes an extra class instead of a supervision, there's compensation, there's still a 1.0 FTE. So that's why at the high school, they also can absorb some of those additional students. That way it's not reflective in the FTE piece as well. And so those fluctuate, so those are always a little bit of a moving target. But the most important thing obviously in asking for board approval is that you understand when we're adding new positions, you know, that, that's the real piece. Ultimately, you approve every one of these individually as we do new hires, you know, through the consent agenda, but it's just trying to, you know, keep you informed of where we're at, at this point. Us, if we were bringing forth an entire new position, that'd be a standalone thing we'd bring back. The position we talked about earlier with communications is not part of this. That'll be a standalone discussion.
Right, right, right.
Okay.
All right, so.
Um, I just want to clarify so that the public is also aware of this issue. That under GNT, that's gifted and talented, correct? We have had no staff at the high school since 0809?
That's inaccurate. One of our resource teachers is assigned to the high school.
Okay, and that resource teacher, okay, so, so if you looked at this, this wouldn't accurately represent the provision of services to those students. Is that correct?
So we have 2.5 FTE, okay, of resource teachers, and they serve every building district wide.
Okay, so why does this come out at zeros right now?
Susan, are you referring to the, specifically the high school staff, not the documents that were just added?
Yes. Yes.
There's another document that's been attached.
I'm looking at the Menonago High School professional staff 2018-19 school year, which also dates back to 0809.
Okay.
And there is no change.
Okay.
And there, it shows no staff support.
Gotcha. Okay, I apologize. I didn't look at the wrong di- that's not appropriate, so.
Oh, okay, so can we at least footnote that? So that it's clear that if there's other areas that people are concerned about that they want that footnote in?
Yeah, and I think the reason for that is that it's a shared staff, and so it just doesn't need, it's not a person, doesn't need just the high school, but, but there is support.
Okay, so if there were a high school student at the, who was identified in tier three as an advanced learner, they would be receiving support from one of the 2.5 staff?
I hope, that's a programming, I, I want to be careful in answering that because I think, it depends on the situation. The high school.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to say right now, as I look at this staffing, it looks like zero. So if it's not zero, then I'd like us to footnote that. I'd like us to at least add that and footnote that. And if it says 2.5 district-wide available, um, I want to know that that's, that's a question I'm getting. I want to be able to answer that question. So right now, if I handed this high school, this sheet to a kid who's gone from eighth to ninth grade and has been an advanced man, is there staff available to support that at the high school?
That's a very complex question. I mean, but by support, okay, there's a number.
Programming. Tier three will require.
Sure, so at the high school, programming generally is taking AP courses and based on the coursework that they're taking.
Required to be written under tier three, under our webpage.
Sure.
And, and every building is a .5 FTE allocated for GT.
Okay, thank you.
So the 2.5 includes .5 at the high school?
Every building has a .5.
I probably, I assume it's kind of need-based, and I assume they flow right.
So, okay, so just put a, a asterisk and put .5 assigned as needed. I don't care.
Sure, we'll update the document. Yeah, this is inaccurate.
Okay. I was just saying, I'm, I'm just reading what you gave me.
Yeah.
Okay.
We do not yet. Any further discussion, or Susan?
Um, I move approval of the 2018-19 preliminary certified staffing plan as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of the staffing, oh, oh boy, yeah. In favor of the staffing plan, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The plan has been approved. Thank you. That takes us to the safe schools statement.
Okay, so we shared this with the board back, actually a couple of months ago, and with the idea, you know, informing you that we plan on sharing this out, you know, with staff and family. We didn't ask for board approval at the time, and now that we have it completed, there's actually a video, I realized I didn't put the link in here, so I'll make sure that gets sent to you as well. Created by students and staff, you know, to support the statement as well. And so we're ready to now take the next step of sharing it out publicly. So we thought it would be good to bring the ba- this back to the board, not only to inform you of that, but I think it is, we're asking for actually formal action to show that the board supports this statement as well. Along with that, I appreciate Dean Bowles pointed out, recommend a small edit to it, which I think makes sense. If I could just read that out loud, and the next, the last sentence of the, of that first paragraph where it begins, the district will not share information or provide access to students unless required by law, and then there's no need for a comma there. And will protect, and the recommendation is to strike the words fight to protect. I think will, I agree, by saying will protect means that we will. And, and so I think those are unnecessary.
That's a good catch.
So with that recommended edits, I, I support those. I would be asking for board to approve this statement.
That, that line cut me up short too, but I, I like, I appreciate that. As a, just a grammatical thing, I would, I would also capitalize the Dean District. That's one of my, if I'm talking about this district.
Yeah, agreed.
Otherwise, I like him.
Looking for a motion then?
So move approval. Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the safe schools statement, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. The safe schools statement has been approved by the board. Thank you. We then go to item six, a farm lease for a portion of parcel.
Uh, can you add, sorry, because I, my hand is very slow in saying, um, the, the reason that the district wanted action from the board, would you also have wanted a roll call vote? I mean, do we, would you want a roll call vote to show that there was unanimous support for that? I was.
No.
You can ask that the minutes show unanimous.
But that, I mean, did you want that? I'm smart asking.
I don't know. Anyone reads their minutes, so I don't know.
Some people do.
But we absolutely can.
Thank you.
That's a fine, that's a fine way to do it.
It's late.
Thank you.
Well, before it was totally passed, somewhat passed.
And, and let me.
So we're moving along, the light goes on.
Absolutely, just appreciate it. And, and to be honest, that was part of the rationale when we didn't ask approval. I, I just assumed acceptance of the board and knew that that board would support that statement, but I think to go on record is important, so thank you for that.
That takes us then to item six, the farm lease for a portion of parcel. Um, oh my.
This is all J.
Can I just say, I'm positive, may I, can I say that? Thank you, everyone.
All right, so as everybody's aware, we purchased some, some property in Glacial Drumloom, next to Glacial Drumloom and Cottage Grove. Part of that property is cropland that has been rented out by a local farmer. And since there is no plans to be using that land for this upcoming crop, crop land year, we are asking for approval of leasing that cropland out. The dollar amount is listed in there. It was determined by, I've worked with UW Extension and the Farm Service Agency to determine that amount and the exact acres they would be using, which is 37.14 acres.
I move approval of the 2018-19 farm lease as presented.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Any plans to speak for her?
You can only wish.
All right, all those in favor of approving the farm lease, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say nay. That has been approved. All right. We then go to our discussion items. And here we have a new batch of revised, deleted, addressed board policies for first reading.
And I can't think of any real exciting changes in these. Most of them were pretty, sometimes they were grammatical, they were playing up a couple steps for everyone, so if anyone has questions, I do have to take a stab at it, but.
Any ones?
The only one that was new was crowdfunding?
That was new, and that's just because we have had that, we talked about that last time, that, that was the question that's raised last time, is what is it, why, and that's, it's a policy because it's a new thing, so it's happening.
Um, I did have a question about just how we handle, if that policy is approved, do we ask building principals to share that out? How, how do we actually get that back out to staff?
Yeah, so depending, if it's something that staff needs to be aware of, that's exactly, I would share out with the building principals and ask them to share accordingly, and then.
Some of these, some of these items get referred to in the speech or handbook.
Absolutely, yeah.
Any other questions?
So they'll be on the next board meeting for passable approval.
Yep.
The 21st.
All right, um, we'll move to our meeting's calendar.
Actually, we've got my report.
Oh, I see. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. I did make a note.
Find it there.
Yes.
We'll keep it brief. So it's under my report. It is actually a combination. Jared worked on this with me. Just wanted to bring to the board's attention now, as we're doing our facilities planning, to not lose sight of the work that you've done in the past with McKinstry and that they continue to be our partner to look for energy efficiencies. And so I just added to the, the board docs, a document that was from back in 2015 that showed the three phases of projects that were completed at that time. And then the 2017 phase two and three measurement verification. Again, annually, they have to do the verification. There's a performance contract to show that we actually are realizing the savings that were promised. And then the last document that we just added, the McKinstry FIM, the facilities improvement measures. They completed this a year ago of recommendations of additional projects that we can do. Now, as you know, we no longer have the energy exemption for the revenue limit, so we have to, but these are still potential savings. And so it was determined at that time to kind of wait and see where we're going with the facilities prod, project. So if we do end up doing some of those maintenance needs where this may fit in, we'll still use McKinstry as a consultant to work with as we look at replacing windows to make sure that they're energy efficient, you know, windows and so on, things like lighting. And so right now, they're actually in the process of doing our, an internal audit of that piece. You know, lighting in particular, there was an upgrade done in one of the phases, I think phase two. Well, all somewhat, five, six years later, of course, as technology changes, there is much more efficient, you know, lighting available. And so as we identify those, whether it be part of our normal capital projects or, you know, future facilities piece, you know, they would handle, you know, making those recommendations in the bidding and so on, you know, for that piece, so. Jared, that one I missed.
You did a very good job.
Is it time to drop the verification? We're not required. We can save a little money by, if we're satisfied with the verification, that the, everything is working well, we can drop the verification. We don't have to pay for it.
No, we have to keep the verification in order to keep our revenue exemption. Every year we have to.
Never mind. No more, no more discussion is necessary. Okay, fine.
Yes, Dean, and then Susan?
I have a, a question. I, I, I think that if somebody put some millions down with McKinstry, and we got millions down with, with our potential referendum type of thing, is this more millions? The same millions, or how does McKinstry work together?
That's with a B, Dean.
Because it looks like, well, if I were looking at these, I, I might begin to add this to, to the few dollars that are on the facility studies. And say there's more, but, but you talked to me about it, so is, I, I have a concern that we need to be able to explain that to people ask.
So McKinstry will do is they will now become a partner at the table, just like Fendorf, just like EWA. And so what Fendorf is doing is they went through and costed things based on. And so what Findorf is doing is they went through and costed things based on, you know, all their costing mechanisms. Now McKinstry will be able to come in, look at that same list of stuff, not add to that list of stuff. They might make some recommendations that we can do internally with our maintenance budget, you know, we're looking at LED, looking at upgrades that are not part of the sixteen million, but it's not going to add to it. And then they'll take that sixteen million dollars, and as we plan a potential new school, they would make recommendations on the types of products, products since they are our energy advisors for the district, so it's not adding on, it's rather is doing its partnering to make sure that when we look at those types of mechanical pieces of things, windows, that we are meeting the energy standards.
So my, my summary of what you said is that these, the, these two, uh, multi-dollar things are working in tandem, and, uh, it's not adding to potential referendum, but finishing off, uh, facility commitments that we've had, which are going to be fully integrated and not duplicative.
Correct.
Does that do it?
That does it.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
So Jared, the phase one, phase two, and phase three?
Mm-hmm.
Am I, is there a timeframe on those, or how do they sink in?
So phase one was, um, we did not u, we only did a one-time energy exemption on the revenue limit, so that's why measurements are not being done on phase one. Phase two and phase three, we borrowed, um, significant amount of money. And so in order for us to get that revenue exemption, to pay that debt so it comes outside of the revenue limit, that's the purpose of the, um, verification purposes of doing that. One was like six million, one was like three million, and I think our last payments on those energy projects, I believe it was like May of two thousand and thirty-five? If that's what you're referring to timetable wise?
Well, I guess what I'm looking at is, um, Glacial Drummond lighting, lighting controls. It was my impression that we had, um, expertise provided to us, I just saw, for free, who did the general audit of the lighting at Glacial Drummond for us, and told us what that would cost us and how much it would save us.
So, yep, so we actually have vendors all the time, uh, doing free walkthroughs for the district. Um, and so what we believe is since the dis, the district had hired McKinstry as our energy consultants, that's where they would walk through. They're not, they'll then bid out that and be able to assist us on finding which vendor is the correct vendor for the district. But you are correct, we did have a local vendor reach out to us, actually two local vendors with LED lighting, reach out to us and do two different walkthroughs and recommendations, and unfortunately, I think, um, where we were at that time, plus the, the payback that each of them had were a little on the opposite end of the spectrum. One was telling us that we had a payback of two years, the other one was telling us we had a payback of four years. And so I think that's the importance of us working through McKinstry, um, as sort of that outside understanding all the phases that we've done, phase one, two, and three. Um, but like, they'll tell you that obviously LED lighting is what people are going to, but there's also other things. And then making sure that we work with our teaching staff, because LED lighting has a different type of lighting than just coming in and replacing single bulbs.
It was also my impression that we had a contact from a previous energy committee member who offered us access at a significantly reduced rate to LED lighting. Did we follow up on that offer, or was there?
So yes, and plus, plus that offer was offered to every s, school district in the state of Wisconsin, so we would cease the two purchasing agreements, so there was nothing special to them in Monona Grove School District.
But we did re, receive specific communication from that individual in our school district. I'm just asking, did we respond to that? I think at the level below you, the communication back.
So yes, so every time that we did receive an email from the district, from that individual, we did respond. However, I do want, since we want to bring it, that individual did not attend certain meetings that we had scheduled with them, so.
Oh, okay.
But we did respond to those emails.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate that.
No problem.
That takes me off the hook.
Anything further on this item? All right, then, that takes us to our calendar. So from previous discussion, do we want to just agree tonight that we're changing April 11th to, to a six P M. start? Or should we take that into conversation and get back to the board?
We have a full schedule, a full session scheduled for that evening.
So, okay.
So it's six anyway, yeah.
Okay, all right.
And then, uh, I don't know, is this an appropriate time to ask if we can schedule a policy meeting, or if you want me to do that, I could, I mean, if April 9th is okay.
I can do it.
Okay.
That's fine, yeah. Okay, so that's added. Anything else for calendar?
Yeah, well, the talking committee, if you don't mind, uh, personnel meets, um, Monday, we normally start at five thirty, and we have meeting for the teachers at six. We have a lot to go through, and I know, Peter, you may not be able to get there at five, but I'm wondering if we could start the committee at five, and at least we can start going through and, and up to speed when you get there?
Sure, that's fine.
I'd like, hate to rush through.
Does that mean you're doing a meeting for first, or?
No, no, it, yeah, so we'll, the committee will meet at five, the teachers will join for meeting for approximately six o'clock.
And in understanding that we've got some really important things to do April 11th, I'm going to continue to ask for, um, having an overview of the advanced learner program for a board presentation. From the end of the super table.
Oh, yeah. Well, you, and Jeff, you have already asked for our input on that.
Yeah, I have, I have fairly extensive notes about that item in my, yep. Anything else?
Technically, under policy, you can ask for that input, but only one board member has to ask for that agenda item to make it valid. I just want to confirm that.
I don't disagree.
It doesn't have to be seven.
I don't disagree, I was simply soliciting input from the rest of the board.
I appreciate that.
Anything else?
I don't know, what time did you say on the ninth?
I'll just ask what time you didn't, one or two o'clock?
No idea.
I, I sent you guys.
I have a, I have one.
You asked them for two o'clock.
Oh, I asked them, oh, on the ninth.
I thought it would be better.
Okay, was that because of me with Jeff, right, or that was the other date, so.
So Jeff is scheduled to join us at that meeting.
At one o'clock works for him.
And one o'clock works for him. Oh, so that, no, that works, okay.
Okay, so I'm glad. Thank you. Thank you.
Third time's a charm, anything further? All right, looking for a motion to adjourn?
They moved to adjourn at nine fifty P M.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. We are adjourned, thank you for your work tonight.